Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 26th special work, uh, city council work session for the city of Bellar Beach. Please join me with, uh, the pledge of allegiance.
My allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of St. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and indivisible.
I have a thought please called Roll.
Councilmember Robinaki.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Banker.
Right.
Councilmember Glenn Gunn.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Notaro.
Here.
Councilmember Rita Swope.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
Mayor Joseph Manzo.
Here.
City Manager Lynn Reeves.
Here.
City Attorney Fred Riley.
Here.
Thank you. Before I begin, we have a three-piece agenda here. Um, I just wanted to ahead to say something to Fred Riley in the break, and he wanted to address us as councils directly.
This is just a follow-up. We had the executive session earlier, and that, of course, and I'm saying it for all council members, two of whom are new, but, um, that is a confidential discussion, and the discussion needs to remain confidential until the litigation has been concluded in whatever form that takes. So I just wanted to mention that, and the mayor asked me about it. I want to be explicit, because if it's one of these times, it tends to be explicit about it.
Thank you.
Yes, okay.
So the first item that, yeah, this is a work session, and even though we're up here, normally we do it on the floor before pre-COVID, and it was a little more informal, but this is a little more informal. Um, first item, it's long, we have three items, but two of them are very long. The first one is discussion of the planning and zoning board's code review final report, where we review the proposed changes to the city code. And so we'll start it off with that. Anyone feel free to begin. Yeah, but we're going to just take it in order. You want to go paragraph by paragraph? Instead of hopscotch it around?
I would like to explain my funny pictures.
Go ahead.
I passed out.
Yeah, just let's identify that for the people in the audience, if they don't have these.
I'll be one to have to share. I may pass around if they'd like. Okay. Okay, so, uh, even though this was not one of the things that was mentioned in the, uh, the recommendations, this is something that just recently occurred. Uh, basically, this is the first time I've ever seen this. A resident, uh, or possibly a contracted employee decided to paint this person's seawall cap. Um, from picture number one, it doesn't look terrible. Uh, in real life, it's, uh, it's pretty bright, and, uh, I don't know, maybe the neighbors could get used to it. I'm not real sure. Um, but that led me to wonder what would happen if they picked a worse color. So if you look on page two, there's the same seawall cap. It's pink now. Uh, if I was across the water and I had a look at that, I would lose my mind. Um, if you go to number three, there's another color. I think that means go. I'm not real sure. And then if you look at number four, you can see that the neighbor on the left joined in on the colorization of the seawall caps. Uh, my point is, is that we've never needed a regulation on something like this, uh, but now I'm beginning to wonder if this is, uh, a possible, a possible new trend, or just what if somebody else said, "That's a great idea. I think I'm going to do it too." Uh, so, um, using my Photoshop program, I decided to repaint their seawall with a neutral color that was pretty close to the original color of their seawall cap. Uh, and I'm just wondering, I'm asking the council if this is something that maybe we should consider writing into, uh, code, uh, just to prevent this from ever happening. And if it does happen, at least we have something to stand on.
Would we have any legal way to stand on this? Uh, maybe our city attorney can answer that. I mean, since it's private property, wouldn't that be a concern as far as the color, if they want to paint it? Now, you know, I agree that they would be on to look at this all the time, but I'm just wanting to make sure there's nothing else. So maybe come back in, you know, after the city board, because it is their private property.
Well, you have the ability to, to put in reasonable standards, so I, I take it from what, uh, Vice Mayor Gunn's explained, that this one was painted, but there's many of them that are not, or most of them are not.
Right. As far as I know, this is the only one that's painted.
Okay.
And it just happened a few months ago.
Well, what, what you often would do is if, if somebody has something that's already existing, then you can, in essence, for want of a better phrase, grandfather it in, but you can set a standard that going forward is now what applies. So that's what I would, would tend to suggest you do, and whatever standard you choose, if that's something you want to regulate in some manner, you, uh, you know, you would have, the, the standards have to give people knowledge of what, what is available to do and what's not. You know, I, I will say this at the outset, um, it, to, to me, this is a global statement concerning this topic, is a lot, a lot of these things, my question is, first question's always going to be, how big of a problem is this? And if, if it's not that, if it's a, you know, one in a hundred-year problem, is it really something you want to spend your time trying to fix? If it's a glaring problem, then maybe it's, you need to address it.
Robinaki.
Um, I have a very similar view to you, so I know which house you're talking about, and I didn't really even notice it. I mean, but, yeah, it doesn't look great, but I don't think it's horrific. Second, I mean, do we even have regulations for house colors? Because that's, that would be the next step. If you start regulating that, then it's house colors. And what happens if I don't like light blue, or peach, or, you know, or that's a big expense to make somebody repaint their house? So I see where you're going. It's, I agree, it's not the best thing to look at, and yes, I see, but I'm just afraid if you go this little step, then the next person is going to start complaining about their neighbor's house color, and then it's going to go the next step, and I don't know if this is a battle we want to get over. If it comes to time where we have rainbow bright, you know, caps going around the, that area, where everyone's doing a different color, then I think we can address it then, but I'm kind of with Fred. It's if it's a one-time occurrence, luckily in the sun it'll fade, and I, I think we'll be fine, but I think we have other caps that are in need of repair, which I think is more of a, looks worse than a painted cap, if we had to pick our battles.
Robin, I have to agree with you. I mean, this is a slippery slope. Frank, you next. Um, you, this isn't a condo association, and one of the things that I'm going to be talking about all night is government overreach. And if you overreach, you get sued. Okay? You don't want to hear it, but that's what's going to happen. You can't tell people what color to paint their house. This isn't a condo. You think it is, but it's not. You can't tell people to pull the leads out of their front yard. You can't tell people they can't put a skateboard on their property for 24 hours. We're over-regulating here. If you want to paint your house pink, it's not my favorite color, but somebody likes it, and they paint their house pink. Mine's yellow. Next guy, I've seen fluorescent blue. I've seen all kinds of colors going around the city. You don't own the property. And unless we could show a fairly debatable reason why pink is no good, or that green that you did is no good, I mean, if this is a safety reason, that's one thing, but because we don't like it, or our neighbor does something they don't like, I mean, why stop there? Let's regulate house styles, let's regulate what shape your driveway should be. We're regulating everything. We're regulating too much. And when you over-regulate, people eventually say, "Not with the regulations." These are private properties. So you can go for health, welfare, and safety, but when you start telling a person what color they can paint their house, you're not going to tell me what color I can paint my house, and I don't think a lot of other people are going to tolerate that. I, I can't imagine that. This is not a condo association. Frank Banker. Mark, I'm going to come to, okay, so what we're going to do is this, there's the citizen comments, it's really not a citizen comments piece. Anybody have any objection to citizen comments? We're going to come to you later on, let the council debate it, and we'll open up for citizen comments. Frank.
I think the question before us is the seawall, not the house color or anything like that, and this has always been my question. The seawall was probably there way before the house, and who installed the seawall? I would say the county.
The owner of the house?
Oh, the owner does. Is that, is that documented, that the owner of the house put that seawall in there? It's up to the owner to repair it if there's a problem with it. Okay. And that's, that one has been replaced by the owner because it's new. So the owner paid for the replacement of that seawall. So when that seawall was painted, what protections, uh, were put into the water? Know what I'm saying? The paint fell in the water? I was there. Yeah, but the seawall was there for a while, and the paint is recent. Well, what I'm saying, whenever you do something on the water, you have to have a barrier, you have to have, uh, things that the paint can bleach out if it was dropped or something like that. Is that done properly? Because there are permits required by the mayor or law for that. We don't know, I guess. Uh, I was just picking on the colors. No, I, I, I agree with you, and I, I agree with Mayor, too. You can't start saying you can't paint this, but it would make me sick if I saw something like that, you know?
And Frank, to your point, I mean, we certainly can say if you're going to paint the seawall, whatever precautions are reasonably necessary to protect the water, absolutely, but, I mean, I hate to tell you, Dave, you didn't do a psychedelic one. They could have done psychedelic, you know, 1960s style, too. So, again, just because we don't like it, somebody else may love it.
It's not, it's not, it's not the fact that it's a blue seawall cap, it's the fact that whenever it gets to rainbow bright, you can't undo it because we didn't write code for it. And that's basically what I'm, what I'm bringing up to this council and, and giving the opportunity to make a decision.
Leslie.
Um, I would agree with, um, Robin and Joan, that, you know, we have no restrictions on what color you want to paint your house, and I don't think we can put a restriction on what color you want to paint your seawall unless it presents some sort of a, a safety issue, um, but I don't think that we can do anything. I, I was just looking at the code, and there doesn't appear to be anything in the, um, building regulations that says you can't paint your house yellow, or pink, or green, or orange, or whatever you want. So I, I, I don't see how we can do it with seawalls unless it were to present, unless there were to be some sort of a safety issue to it.
Absolutely right. I mean, if there's a navigation reason that, you know, like, I don't know, like a stop sign red or something, maybe there's something that means you, you know, or if you make it, if you paint it to look like a buoy or something like that, then if it's confusing, you know, people, that, we could stop that. But if you want to make it, you know, and, and one of the things I'm going to say tonight over and over, I think sometimes the less said, the better on this stuff. When we get to the sign thing, Fred, you did a terrific job researching this, but I got issues. And sometimes the less we talk about it, the better it is, because when you start telling people, "You can't do this," that's when they start saying, "Watch me, I will do it." Um, and then we get into that whole set of lawsuits, you know, that we don't want to be getting into, so, um, anyway. Anybody else have comments on this? And this was kind of off-agenda, but it is a point that's valid, so, you know, that we might want to consider. I'm going to propose that we maybe just go page by page, and flip through these, and everybody get the comments out. Um, we can, yeah, let's, let's take care of this issue with the, with the citizens. So we'll go to citizens at this point? Marv?
The only thing I'd say about the seawalls, I think maybe let Fred take a look at it. Water navigation might say something about the color, if it's green or red, or anything like that, or it's reflective at night, someone coming in there could head for that seawall and possibly get an accident.
Any other citizens? Council? Fred, I think that's a fair thing. I mean, if there's, you know, it's, it's up to you, we want to consider. I mean, you know, for example, somebody paints it, just at the race, if somebody had a race car that was like reflective gold, you know, if somebody paints something that's, that, you know, potentially mess up the ship's navigation, and we could do something about that. I don't know maritime law, so I'll defer to you. Do you know it?
I actually, in law school, was awarded a doctorate admiral's.
There you go. Okay, captain, well, you got it.
The thing I would say is, and I do this frequently, so I, this is nothing new, um, with Muni Code, you can search, um, the codes from, from any city, or almost any city in Florida. There may be another city that has looked at this and put forth a thoughtful, uh, well-founded code provision that addresses this. Let me look and see if, if I can find something like that, and then, uh, have it back to you, so you can at least see what somebody else did. A lot of the stuff, and I'm, I'm looping back to something that happened a couple months ago. I think Dave had a question about the, um, boats being moored in the city's jurisdiction, and that was, you know, very easily I found a code provision from another city that, that addressed that and did a real good job of giving us, you know, something to at least look at, and I would expect I could find something, you know, that had, had some bearing, just so you see how somebody else did it. And there, there may be a relatively straightforward way of looking at it, and it's something for you to consider.
Frank?
Fred, maybe take it offline, and I may be able to help you break into the network with the Coast Guard and the aids to navigation, part of the subject that I was speaking.
Okay. Yeah, um, folks, we got to speak into there, because Marv's given me the sign that he can't hear, so, um, Glenn Gunn said he will try and work with Fred, but maybe get him hooked up with some of the Coast Guard information aids to navigation. Okay? You can hear me, right? Speaking to the mic, everyone. All right, chapter, I think we go right to chapter two, administration, unless anybody had anything before that. So with that, I'm going to be on, I'm on page six of 15. Council, does anyone have any comments or anything you wish to discuss? Let's just go page by page. Anybody on page six?
Well, I did have one, just a little scribble kind of thing. Uh, I think you have to have like the, uh, the 10,001, I think, in paragraph B, 2-350 under City Manager Reeves. Let's see, B expenditures, the 5,000 to 10,000, other places were saying, you know, that $1, you know, we need to bracket that a little more carefully.
I guess.
I, I don't know.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's a discussion point, and, I mean, my point was, we're getting up to some nice limits over here, and nothing against City Manager Reeves, it could be, you know, before, we had another city manager, and I, you know, just hear the best of things. So, um, these are pretty good numbers, these are pretty high numbers right now that we're, we're going up to. So that was my, one of my scribble points, and the other thing was, is talking about changing, what I think in ordinance, by changing it by resolution, and I don't believe that's the appropriate way to amend an ordinance. I think you, if you're going to amend a piece of the ordinance, you need to, and Fred's taken, he said, "Yes, you need to do the amendment process. You can't change it by resolution. Temporary authority, yes, not permanent."
I did have one, other thing is, I, I can go with the increased values, everything's going up in the world, but I would like to caveat there with just a duty to inform that you may be pressing those limits, or, or up to-hand limit, just.
What, what I, what I was trying to accomplish, the, the city council, you know, instead of going out for a bid, which takes time and staff time and cost, for things that are between 10,000 and 25, if, if we're able to get three proposals, and we suspended the bid requirements several times for those type of caveats, so that, that's really what I was asking, to, to adjust that. Still got to come to the city council. Uh, you still have to approve it, and you still have to, you know, we have to get three written bids from someone or proposals. Uh, I'm just trying to kind of clean that up, and then when it's something over 25,000, then we've got bids. So, uh, you know, the, these numbers are probably 20 years old, or more. Well, 20 years ago, $3,000, what is $3,000 today? Realistically, 10? I don't know, but, but, so that's what I was asking, to kind of streamline the purchasing process.
I mean, I don't have a problem with bringing it up if you haven't brought it up in 20 years, but I'll get, I'll use the Fred Riley logic. I use it when it helps me, Fred. Um, and, and it, and it's not really a problem. We don't have that many things that we're going out to bid on, because, you know, being a smaller city, I mean, I don't see this as being a problem. It's not like you're coming here with 12 bids every council meeting or anything. So I, I don't know that we even have a problem with the numbers as they are. Maybe kick them up a little bit. I'm just looking at these numbers, I mean, remember, you know, whatever we're putting here goes for whomever our next city manager is, and I, you know, yeah, I have confidence in you, but I don't know that I want to throw that to the next person necessarily right out of the bat, because this does have the ability to be manipulated very easily. I mean, you know, we're, we're trusting in you, and you do a wonderful job of getting us some competitive bids, even if you're not required, you have the context, but this could also be abused. I mean, you, you could make whoever win, win that you want to win, you know, by simply picking the highest guy in the county, and then pick the guy you really want. So you don't do it, some people could do it, and that's the whole competitive bid process part, no point. Go up to the council.
This goes right to the heart of how long it takes to do business. I mean, every prices, expenditures going up, revenues, I don't know, but we've got to be able to conduct business in a expedient manner. And when he has to keep coming back to the council, wait for the monthly sessions, or week, two weeks for a work session to get an approval, or we, we have to go to a council session anyway, then we're really hampering his ability to conduct timely professional business. So I'm in favor of these, these, uh, upper limits, these, these increased limits. I think that gets business done in a more expedient fashion. And if you're saying safeguards are still there for duty to inform and approval, then I'm not quite sure, Marv, should hands go to the city manager? With limits set, are they taken away?
Well, also, there is another statement in that same paragraph that says the city council may authorize expenditures from 10,001 to 25,000 upon receiving three written bids. So we're still doing the same thing, we're just not tying our hands as much, because I agree, everything has went up, way up, since these numbers were put in place, and I agree with, uh, Councilmember Gunn, we can't keep hindering you from doing your job by having to come to us for all the little things. And it's already covered, that will have a say in the bigger items.
At the end of the day, it still takes two signatures on a check to get any business done. That's true. That's the bottom line.
Yeah, and, uh, as far as the values are, they round it off to a dollar. You're not leaving a provision between 10,000 and 10,001, so it needs to be a penny, and, uh, I like where this is going, even though I don't like standing in the line.
Call for the consensus then, if you just know.
Um, hang on, you have to talk to the citizens. I'll run it. Any more council comments? That's on Marv's hand. You just bring your chair up here if you'd like. Save the water.
You can't worry from the habit.
I'd like to give my two cents on it. No, the only thing I would suggest.
Right into the mic, Marv.
Only thing I could, I don't know. There we go.
Yeah.
But the only thing I would suggest is maybe put it in with budget every year and change it, let the council change it when they go to the budget. So either limit or extend any of those items, I mean, that's part of your plan.
Well, you have to change it, uh, ordinance by ordinance, you can't, you can't change it through the back door like that. I mean, we, it's okay, it's very easy to change, but we just have to go through the veranda process.
Put it on best practice.
Saying, review it once a year. Review it once a year.
Right.
Anyone else? Back to council. So I think we have kind of consensus here that everyone seems to be okay with the limits. I, I have no, I mean, if everyone's okay with it, I'm not going to stand in the way, it wouldn't matter anyway. Um, I do think we have to change this, that ordinance has to be changed by an ordinance, and so all of this has to be changed by an ordinance, um, if we're going to do this. And I do like Marv's idea of that, maybe we put in that ordinance, I mean, kind of makes us have to do it, but take a look at it every two years, maybe, or, you know, I don't know if we have to look at it every year, but.
One way, one way to do it, Mayor, would be to, um, to have, uh, target A, B, and C as determined by the budget. Uh, that would force you to determine those amounts every year, because we do a budget every year. Uh, so that would satisfy what Marv is requesting. Personally, I would rather it be an ordinance and, uh, and be written in stone, because it's harder to change.
And I think it's Dave, would you say it's A, because then it's buried in a budget, and it's hard to see, so it's, it's a good way to change it, it would have, I mean, more work for us, but I think it should give a little bit more work for us, but I'll defer to legal on that.
Well, I, I agree. Have, have it be it by ordinance, and if you're going to change it, change it. There, there's times where you have to have absolute clarity on spending money, and having it in the ordinance and nowhere else is, to me, by far, the better way of doing it.
And I think the citizens deserve to know what authority we're giving to our city manager. They may or may not like that, and we need to hear from them, so. Um, we could with like, I just don't think we need to do it every year, like every two years, maybe, you know, look at it, because if you, you can do it every year, but we're going to put ourselves to a lot of work here.
That's our, our timeframe on code review, anyway.
I think I called for this one, you were on the last one, I mean, it seems like we do it when.
Not every two years.
Yeah, it's kind of like every couple of years to look at it, so maybe we do it with our code review.
Yep.
Every couple of years, look at code review. That could be added. Okay. Patty, are you noting this stuff? Okay, good, because we're not. All right, anybody else have anything on page six? We go to page seven. I had a problem with number seven, and I'm going to defer that to legal also, Mr. Riley. Um, it says on, uh, 2-245A8, "Notice that failure of the violator to attend the hearing shall result in a fine being assessed against him or her." I believe this goes against every rule of criminal law, okay? You can be tried for murder, and you don't have to show up for your own trial. I don't see how we could compel you to come to your violation hearing, particularly if you're an absentee owner and you live in Montana, and you own property here, you know, I, I don't think that makes you guilty till proven innocent, um, so I don't think you can say that. I don't think that even has any place in here whatsoever. That's just me, I, I think that's a due process issue. I don't think you have to say a word in your hearing, and why do you have to come? They know how to get you. Lynn Reeves knows how to get you. He can send you to my mom. He's smiling, he loves being able to get you.
Well, just respond, it's a due process issue, you're absolutely correct, and I, I would not try to implement that.
Okay, I think that should be deleted. I want to, council, any issues on that?
Delete the entire?
Delete that whole thing that says, "Notice that failure of the violator to attend the hearing, not may, shall." You shouldn't even be talking about that.
So eliminate E8.
Yeah, eliminate E8, that whole thing that says against him or her, that, I, it just has no place in here. And this is just a point of information on 2-47, uh, 2-247 powers, it's talking about subpoena service. I don't know if we have a special deal with the sheriff or the police. Okay, well, they don't serve civil subpoenas. You need to get a private process server. So we're saying it could be the Pinellas County Sheriff, but in reality, it won't be. You're going to have to use a private server, unless they do us a favor, because they won't do it for a regular attorney, so, just FYI. I don't know if you want to change it or not, but they won't.
Well, we, we just wanted to get, because it said, city police department.
They won't do it either. They won't do it either.
We don't have one.
No.
Why? What the condition was is to get that out there.
But you have the right to form something, or a small, that, that is a right that we've retained in our, in our charter and, um, code, so, I mean, you don't have to strike it, but I'm just telling you, for a practical purpose, the sheriff's not going to serve it, if you put together a small city police department, let's say a part-time squad or something like that, you could conceivably do it. I, I don't have a problem. If we, we don't have it, and you want to strike it, it's fine, I'm good with it. Good with, with the way it stands, or Glenn?
I just had a question, because I don't have the entire code open, but 2-245, that E, I mean, that's, that's number eight, what are the other, is there any conflict or any, uh, unexpected consequences if we delete number eight?
We're not deleting number eight, are we?
We're just taking off that sentence that says, notice to, uh, it, I think it presently says, notice, I, I did look all of these up, notice that failure of the violator notice, I did look all of these up. Notice that failure of the violator to attend a hearing. It says may right now and the suggestion was make it shall result in a fine being assessed against him or her. My, my recommendation is you eliminate the whole line. Because if I'm challenging this as an attorney, I'm going to say, hey, you already stacked this deck if I don't show up. You've got good grounds for a fight.
So you're not leaving the may?
I'm, as far as I'm concerned, take the whole sentence out. I don't think, if there's anything more, I'm not, I'm not asking that back up.
I have an issue. I mean, if they, if they don't attend, they could still have a fine. Says may result in a fine being assessed. So if they don't attend, they could have a fine even though they didn't attend. So I don't have a problem with the way it's stated.
I do. Because you're highlighting that their attendance has something to do with this. It's a case of the obvious. If you don't attend, you can be fined. You choose to attend or defend yourself. But why say, why even highlight that attendance has anything to do with this? It doesn't. That's not what you're being fined for.
I see. You know, if you, if you don't attend, you still could get a fine. If you attend, you could get a fine. If you don't attend, you can still get a fine.
Then say it also shall, may result in acquittal. Then put it both ways. It's redundant. You don't need it. It's a case of the obvious. Counsel, what do we want to do? And I have to open up to the citizens first. Why not? Citizens? Marv? No? Okay. Back to council. Do we have consensus?
I was, I was there at the meeting. So Lynn Reeves was an advisor there and Bonner Scherer was there. Is there something in the thinking that we're not privy to or in our discussion?
Well, the wording right now is may. And really, they were trying to say shall would be more, they thought would be more enforceable. But the wording as it says now, currently, it says attend the hearing may result in a fine being assessed against him. And then they add it, or her. But the fact of the matter is, if, if the word shall isn't put in there, you can still get a fine if you don't attend. You may get a fine. And that happens with some-
Sure. That's just a fair warning, isn't it?
Marv?
That's just a fair warning. I mean, if you don't attend, you could still result in a-
But they, the code review committee looked at it and said, shall is more, I'll say, they thought was more enforceable. But realistically, we have people that don't come to the code hearings anyway. And they still may get a fine or some stipulation is an example for not, uh, good example, we've got around property. The magistrate fined him the five hundred dollars administrative fee and seventy-five dollars a day for not registering that property.
So they didn't have to show.
Huh?
They didn't show.
No, it said, you know, they, what you're telling with may is you may get a fine, but-
Yeah, shall is definitely about, but may, it doesn't matter. Yeah, you can't, you can't.
You can't find them. You can still, even if they don't come, they're not getting a fine for not coming. They're getting a fine for whatever the violation was.
So we're going to leave it alone and just not put shall. I don't care if you say him or her, that's fine.
I think we leave it alone, but add the or her at the end. That, that I do agree with. But leave it at may and, you know.
Fred?
Well, I was going to say, leave, leave it the way it is. The key thing is if they get due process, which is notice and an opportunity to be heard, and they show up and put forth a vigorous defense, or they don't show up, the special magistrate, if there's due process, will then make a determination that's a valid proceeding. And if they're, a fine's levied, a fine's levied and it was done with due process. So in some ways, I think you're overanalyzing a little bit. I think the, the committee was trying to put more teeth in it and that it's a noble desire, but the, the key thing is make sure there's due process, which there is, and whatever happens is up to the special magistrate.
This isn't a knock on the committee. There were no attorneys on this committee. You didn't sit in on this. I did not attend these meetings. I know that comment was made a couple of times that they're not attorneys. You don't expect them to know all this kind of stuff. This is what you go to law school for. So they did a fine job, you know, getting these suggestions to us. And that's, this is not a knock on what they did, but I don't want law that is going to cause us problems. So that's fine. So we're going to make, we're going to say may, leave that alone, add the or her. And then powers, we're going to strike city police department, right? Everybody's good with that because we don't have one? So, okay. That's, you're seven. Does anybody else have any comments? Take it to page eight. Fees, residential registration fees and homestead exemption. Lynn, it says that you're going to research the surrounding community's fees. My only comment that I put on my little note here was why not higher? Why not five hundred? Why not fifty? Why not twenty-five? I mean, you know, these people are making a bundle on these rental properties. So if, if the city gets a little bit out of this, particularly since it causes some aggravation for our police and for our administrative here, that's fine. I'm about to admit.
Well, just to clarify what this fee is for, this is a fee for, I'm going to use Nautical Watch. Is there a timeshare? Well, they pay a base fee. The previous fee was a hundred dollars. And when we raised the rental registration fee, we didn't address these fees. So what I recommended to the committee is the base fee is three hundred. I think it's one to ten units is twenty more dollars. And then beyond that, it goes to ten dollars a unit. Because basically, you raised the rental registration fee against, we'll say, other condo owners, which, you know, they're paying, but we didn't get these, what they call, I'll call them resort, things like the Bellar Motel and Nautical Watch, where they pay a different fee. And that's what this is, to just increase those to a higher level. Basically, the one hun, it was one hundred, we raised it to the rental registration fee, which is for everyone else. And then the other fees were just doubled.
And these haven't been changed in a long time, right?
No.
Okay. And did you research any surrounding communities to get an idea?
I, I talked to some others and it's kind of all for how they handle this. Some, some people charge a very minimal rental registration and other communities charge, I think we're the highest. I will tell you that. We are the highest in the area. It's, it's not set in stone that it's X dollars for this.
So we're already actually doing a substantial increase with these numbers, it sounds like to me. So I think that, in my opinion, the fees are high enough with these increases and that we move on because it's hard to compare apples to apples when you're looking at other communities with those two facilities that you're talking about. I mean, it's virtually hard to compare them. So I would just go on with these increases, the suggestions, and they sounded me.
Right.
I think the mayor brings up a good point. These, these fees haven't been increased in a long time. And I think it would be wise to benchmark these against some of the other municipalities to see what they are charging. One of the things I bring back from this IE and W thing, and we'll address that at the, at the meeting, because I asked for agenda, but there is a recommendation that fees be examined and reviewed on an annual basis. I mean, not waiting five years, detained age or whatever, but do this to make sure that you're keeping up with the times and, and it's just the best practice. So A, I would suggest that we actually do benchmark some of the other municipalities. And two, as part of the annual code review process or biannual code review process, we go ahead and take a look at that, but start looking at fees on an annual, frequent basis. Thanks.
Good point. Anyone else on council?
I'm, I'm good with these rates. As you stated, I would welcome just knowing what other municipalities are doing up and down the beach. Just bear in mind, somewhat comparable. I wouldn't consider us, we shouldn't have the same fees as Indian Rocks Beach.
And I think, you know, to that point, let's, you know, because this has to come up, this is an ordinance change. Right. Let's make sure, because we did get a little pushback when we raised the rental registration fees. There was comments made. There was a lot of comments made actually in the city. Let's make sure everybody in the city understands why we're doing this. It hasn't been raised since nineteen sixty-seven and, you know, and we're the best price in the neighborhood. And it is Bellar Beach and you get a higher rental rate than some of the other cities. I mean, let's, you know, I'm not going to say sell it, but let's inform everyone why we're doing what we're doing. We're just not grabbing money here. You know, this hasn't been looked at in, you know, probably some time.
Another thing to consider in the read of, I'm sure she can confirm this, there is no property, there's no property available right now. If you find rental property here, you're doing very well. That means that they can charge a premium, just like homes are going for a premium right now. So it's clear profit if they're in the rental business, I'm sure.
Well, another thing you need to keep in mind is kind of catch twenty-two right now because of the rules about kicking out a tenant that doesn't pay. I mean, landlords all over the U.S. are suffering big time because you can't kick out somebody. They can live there for over a year but not pay one dime of rent as of right now. They, people been doing this since last March and have been really taking quite advantage of the situation that landlords are suffering. So yes and no. You've got rental properties that are hard to find, but you got a lot of landlords that are saying they don't want even, even in their properties right now. That's the one I have to talk about.
Good point. Of course, some of these are short, very short-term rentals, like the Bellar Beach Club and things like that. That's not, they're not suffering. They've got half parking lot. Lynn's laughing because he knows I'm right. All right. Anybody else have any comments on that? All right, we move on to page. So we're basically going to, we like the fee number. Everybody's good with that. We'll change it. And to what Glenn said and what we all kind of agree with, let's bench rights.
Right now, we do it October to September. There was a suggestion, because it confuses people, that we do it by calendar year.
That's a good suggestion.
So, because it confuses people. Like, well, I, I thought I paid last year and realistically, they paid, you know.
Does it have any impact with, with our accounting?
No, you're going to have some that slides, but it's not going to have any major impact.
We're all good with that?
Yep.
There's nodding agreement.
Okay.
Let's move on to page nine. We have environment prohibited conditions declaration of nuisance. Anybody have any comments on that? I do, Lynn, because I think this came out of a, an actual incident that we had in the town, a couple of incidents. We had some people who had put like these rubber, I'll call them gutter fills or whatever, and they, they were saying they needed them for their car and stuff like that. I, I'm not so sure that we have a problem if it's just cars. Here's my concern, okay? If they are incapacitated in a wheelchair or some type of, you know, device that they have to use, and we're going to say, you've got to take this gutter, you know, valley curb and go down and up, we may be having an ADA issue. That was my only concern in reading this. I don't think the car is so bad of an issue, but I think that could be an issue.
Well, this was brought up partially because if other areas were code, you can't put anything in the curb that blocks your drainage. And these do block your drainage. And a couple of them, Danny lifted a mug. It was mud all under it, you know. So it is blocking the drainage flow on the street, but-
But that doesn't address my, what I just asked. I mean, yeah, I, I agree. I mean, if it's just a car, you're doing it because, you know, you don't want to scrape the bottom of your car, just go over it a little slower and you won't do it. But if you're in a wheelchair or you're in a, something else, you know, that you need to go down that curb to maybe load into a van or another, you know, ambulance or something like that, and now we're saying you can't do it, I don't know that we'd want to be doing that. So-
Well, the only issue we have now is with cars. We have an ADA issue. Anything else?
Then maybe we need to put, Fred, I'll defer to you, maybe we need to put some ADA language in here that nothing shall prohibit, you know, the proper use. Now, if somebody says it's for ADA, here we go again. It's the dogs and the, you know, the dog, the dog's issue again, you know. But I mean, you know, I think you know if it's legit or not, you know. So I don't know. I'm just suggesting and trying to keep you out of an ADA problem. So, Mr. Riley?
It's a good, it's a valid point. I always have to be measured when I say things in public, but the, those are, the plaintiff's attorneys that represent ADA complaints are some of the most innovative slash questionable attorneys I've ever dealt with in my life. So the, that's probably all I should-
Don't be looking at me when you say that. I'm just bringing it up. Do you think it's valid? I mean, I do. I think you should put some, I think you should allow that one. That's an exception.
Do you want to do a change in the code that prohibits the blocking the gutters? That is something you want to do then, correct?
Well, you know, Lynn, I mean, these things have a name, whatever these gutter things are. I mean, maybe we can specify if you must have it for medical reasons, then here's the ones you have to use. Maybe you can find the one that has the least amount of drainage issues. I mean, there's options here. We don't have to just let anybody put anything in there. They don't have to, they shouldn't fill the valid curb because that is like acting like a dam, you know. So, Marv?
Can we put in there something about by special permit? Like they have to get it approved by the city? Like, don't just say, here's a list of companies. Just say, like, Lynn needs to go out and see which one they want and make sure it's valid and renewable or whatever. And make sure that there's a wheelchair and he'll just go to cop box.
Well, in the one example, the individual told me he would-
Lynn, right into the mic because I can't hear you.
In the, in the one example the individual told me, and I have an email from him that said he would move it if there was a heavy rainstorm, but he's never removed it. And we've had some heavy rainstorms.
Yeah, but we have.
So how many driveways would somebody in a wheelchair have to go down that has an actual drainage guttering system there? I mean, they're not in the driveways, right? Is there any in the city that ends at a drive? I don't understand why you would affect a wheelchair when the drainage gutters are set aside from your driveway. So if you need to go down there to get into an ambulance or a van or anything, your driveway is your driveway. You should still be able to get there. But with that said, I also like the idea of Councilmember Dr. Aki of saying that they have to get the special permission from the city so that somebody does know that, you know, that person in that home is handicapped. I, I agree with that a hundred percent, but I don't understand why somebody can't get out of their driveway. The vans can back up into their driveways to pick them up or the ambulance or whatever. They're going to get them out of there. I've never seen a drainage pipe or the guttering in a driveway.
It's in front of every driveway in the city.
No, mine is over to the side. There is no drainage there.
It's not the drainage.
We're talking about a curb. Well, you got to have a curb.
And these Miami curbs, they don't have a long pitch. I mean, I don't know why you wouldn't put in anything in a Miami curb. I mean, it's, it's lower than a typical housing curb.
The reason why they're doing this is because they're, they drive high-dollar, low-profile automobiles and they don't want to scrape them.
I understand that, but it's still under a Miami curb unless you're hitting that driveway at twenty knots an hour, you're going to, you're going to have to scrape it. It just doesn't-
I scraped it. I wasn't doing twenty. I got a low-profile car. But it's not about the car. You know, you don't scrape it if you're backing out. So that's, I'm not, I have zero worry about the car because there's an alternative.
I think when you choose to live in a beach community where there's water on both sides, you, you have to adhere to the drainage. Do I sense-
I would, I would say that they're prohibited unless you have a medical necessity.
ADA, yeah. I mean, it's, I don't think you're, I don't think you want to go down the ADA route and tell people, oh, it's not that big of a problem. It is a problem. If you're in a wheelchair, it could be, you could get stuck in a thing if you can't, if you don't have the strength to get yourself out of it. I, I just think it has to be a level surface if you're riding it. And you're not going to get into, gee, a van can pull in your thing. Maybe it can, maybe it can't. Maybe you've got six cars in your driveway. So you don't want to inhibit any disabled individuals' progress in any manner. That's a lawsuit. Citizens? Council, what do you want to do?
I say just add the ADA language.
I say just add the ADA language. It would permit approval from city or something, not permit, but maybe approval from city.
I agree with, um, Councilmember Dr. Aki.
Rule in agreement? We're getting consensus, okay, so that would get adjusted that way. I had nothing else on page nine? Anybody else? Sold. Number 10, Buildings and Building Regulations. There's a lot on the page, so, um, anybody have any comments?
Section 1032?
Yes, Frank, go ahead.
We're now saying if you have...
Frank, get to the mic, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, we're now saying if you have to repair three sheets of sheet rock, do you need the money?
Yeah. My question is why 100? The other, the other problem I had with this is, I mean, I think it's Pinellas County requires you to have a toilet, portable toilet, every time you do any kind of major renovation. Some people maybe have never built, okay? They're not gonna take it to your backyard. They're not gonna drive off-road, they're not gonna bring the truck. And they have to maintain this every week. I know it doesn't look pretty in your front yard, but think of it as progress, okay? Somebody's building something really nice that is actually making your area better. I don't see how you can shield it. When, when you build a project, you pretty much cut down what's there. You might leave a tree or two, but it's not like you can put it behind a hedge. And I, you know, we're hitting people with every fee in the world for impact fees and this, that, and the other thing. And now we're gonna say, what, you gotta fence your toilet in? That you're gonna have for two months or three months or six months? I mean, it's a toilet. I know it's not pretty, but it, it's just one of the necessities of building a project. And I, I don't know that there's an easier alternative. I appreciate the suggestion, that we wanna try and keep it hidden. I don't like looking at them either, but I do like looking at the nice improvement that comes out of it, you know?
I'm sorry. I'm maybe a bit lost, I'd like some clarification. I thought, uh, Councilmember Frank Banker was talking about section 1032. I don't see anything about...
He's, he's talking about 1035.
1035.
Okay, so we're done talking about 1032 then?
And you can talk about anything, the whole page, yeah.
No, I, I wasn't gonna get into 1035, but when you, I wouldn't want somebody to move their toilet in the backyard next to my porch.
And, and they won't move it. I mean, you know, you're gonna, they're not going off-road. It's sand, you know, just like we were just talking about, sand is a problem. So, they're not gonna drive that truck over your sand. They're gonna drop it right by the curb.
1035, I, I think it's, it's not necessary. And the reason why is because I had a dirt road for the last three or four months. And I knew it was gonna, we were gonna get asphalt one day. And, uh, and it was worth the wait. And, uh, there may be an outhouse across the street from you, but you're gonna have a beautiful home across the street from you soon and wanna make it worse.
I mean, I, I think it can be a suggestion if you can place it in an inconspicuous area, if you can. But I don't think we should mandate it and start making people build fences around outhouses just for these things. These are typically not long projects. And, you know, Dave just said what I said. I mean, something good has come out of that usually. Somebody's improving their property values. Let's work with them, we want our city to keep building and improving.
As long as it's clean under the regulations of the court of law. I mean, it doesn't matter how many people use it per day, per week. It should really have followed.
I can tell you from personal experience, they're very rarely used in the summertime because they're just sweating so much that, um, they don't get used much. I mean, the guys come and they, there's nothing to clean out. It's just, that's the way it works, so, um, but, you know, they can be, yes, they have to be maintained, of course. Um, deal. Anyone else? I did have one other issue here with weeds, invasive species, and I'm talking about the weeds list here. I know we don't want weeds, okay, but I don't want weed police either, okay? I don't want people walking through the front yard going, you got weed. And having had Kentucky bluegrass lawns and firehouses, I will tell you, they drink a lot more water than the weeds, which drink almost nothing, which is why they thrive in this environment. Um, I don't know that we can even make a reasonable argument that weeds use less water. I mean, we already say that you can't have certain height on grass and weeds, and I think that's perfect. We wanna say you wanna avoid it, but government overregulation here. I mean, you wanna have wildflowers, have them. Remember, it's not in our code and it's conspicuous by its absence. And I hate to say this because somebody might be listening, but the governor last year, I think it was last year or the year before, signed a bill that says you can put a vegetable garden in your front yard. So, I know we like to see those pretty lawns in Beller Beach, but you can see a cornfield too. So, I guess my point is, let's not push it, okay? Because somebody will put a farm in their front yard and they have every right to do it. And we can't legislate that out. And you can have lots of rows of dirt and there will be weeds. So, I, I just think, don't worry about the weeds. It's not, it's not a problem. Glenn and...
I think the reference to this actually makes it more specific. There have been some recent issues where, hey, it's bamboo or grass or a tree. Well, by tying it to the state, the Florida state listing, it takes it all out. It takes all of the inquestral stuff out and it ties it to the state and says, okay, there's our reference there. And if it changes, the Florida, the state Florida changes, fine, we just go right along with it. It takes some of the inquestral things out of, people coming and saying, hey, you know, my bamboo is a corax. It's not a tree, so you can't tell me I have to trim it all the time. And it just kinda takes the pressure off the public works and code enforcement and the city manager, so...
Yeah, this is just for invasive species. We're not talking about weeds in general, like, but it's, Florida state has an invasive species list. An example, Brazilian pepper. And, and we've had complaints about various other trees that are in the city. And the neighbor says, well, that's on the invasive species list. Well, in our code, it doesn't talk about the invasive species list. It talks about Brazilian pepper, uh, but beyond that, that's all it talks about. So, all this is doing is saying, if it's on the invasive species list, you need to remove it.
But it's not, I thought what it says, it's saying state listed noxious weeds list. It's, it's not, I mean, I, I, I know that Brazilian pepper and things like that are, you know, these are trees, bushes, whatever you wanna call them, they gotta, you know, their, the state doesn't want them. But I, I don't wanna spend city money going through people's front yards going, you gotta, whatever the hell the name of the weed is and, you know, you should know and you gotta get that removed. Because you know how they're gonna remove it? They're gonna dump a whole bunch of weed killer on it. That's really not good for the lizards, the ground, the groundwater and everything else that's with it. Then what do you get? I mean, I, I don't wanna get the weed police, I think it's overreach.
I'm gonna give you the example. We have a, a neighbor that continually brings this to us because there's a tree, I forget what the name of it is, that's on somebody's property next door and they don't like that tree and it's on this list. And they, they wanna go on, you know, uh, spreading stuff into their yard. And, uh, actually, we had that discussion on the, the meeting about this situation. And so, that list just gives a reference. We're not wanting to go out on somebody's weeds. We're just, it, it's just a cross-reference to what the state says are invasive, noxious, state listed noxious weeds.
Generally, the city doesn't go out looking at everybody's vegetation. It's usually whenever there's a complaint, right? That's whenever this gives you teeth, this gives you something, a spine to back up if the neighbor has a legitimate complaint, right? As far as our code enforcement officer going out and going, eh...
I would hope not.
You've got codes...
Our code, uh, you know, code enforcement... What kind of weed it is anyway?
Well, yeah, I mean, look, the problem with this stuff is, if you write it as a law, somebody might go out and do it. That's my problem with it. If it's on the books, it's a law, okay? We got a lot of stupid laws. We have them, other cities have them, and if you put it there, somebody can do just that. And I'll tell you where that ends up, okay? It ends up with stuff like they had up in Dunedin with the mayor or whoever's been be your mayor down the road getting the hate mail and the death threats because somebody's going, why are you picking on Mr., you know, military hero's front yard and his weed, okay? We don't need that, we don't need that publicity. So, I don't care about a Brazilian pepper tree, take it down, that's fine. But this says weeds, I don't know what we're talking about. A weed to me is little stuff in the grass and I don't know what's on the list. And I don't, wouldn't identify most of these weeds if I stepped on them. I don't know, you know, it's all green, I don't care, so...
I think we should leave this or put it on there because I agree with Councilmember Glenn Gahn and City Manager and Vice Mayor Gaddis that this is all referenced by the Florida state. And I think we should stick with the Florida state rules so that we're, you know, in the same situation as they are. Um, also, it isn't anymore of a big deal than what, um, the City Manager Reeve stated. It's when somebody has a problem that they complain. There's nobody going out checking anybody's weed. So, I feel like we should put this in there and, and go ahead.
It, it's there to solve an existing problem. It takes the subjectivity out of it. It cures a repetitive problem where every six months somebody's calling the City Manager because they're complaining about their neighbors next door and they're trying to make the City Manager make a subjective determination. Well, is that a noxious weed or is that just a beautiful plant in my yard? Well, the, the state of Florida's already made a decision about that, so let's take the burden off the City Manager and align with the state. Makes his job easier.
Bring it up to a motion on, and bring it up to an ordinance change. We'll debate it at that point. We're not gonna come to a, you know, complete consensus. If six people want it and I'm against it, fine. But, you know, I'm just telling you, don't start being the weed police, it's gonna get crazy.
No, no, I, I can provide you with the list so you kind of...
Yeah.
A lot of it's trees, it's just what the state goes out.
Yeah, there's a hundred and six, uh, there's a hundred and six species on the list. I just pulled it up. And, uh, it's pretty straightforward. Somebody has an argument, it's on the list. Hey, go check it out and tell them to cut it.
And let's make sure we do that in all of our properties and every one of our gardens and in our back lot over here. You know, we, we, we work by the same laws that the rest of the city goes by.
See, the problem is, is that if this stuff is right next door, right on your lawn, it will encroach into your yard. You can cut it all day long, it is not going away. You, you have to go and cut it on your neighbor's lawn. You have to go in there, dig the stuff. In some cases, you, even if you cut it all the way down to the ground, it continues to come back. That's the problem. And it's, it's not that every one of these is, is gonna spark a, somebody complaining, but it is a nuisance. And I'm sure everybody here has had an issue at some time or another, especially if they, you know, if they really care about their lawn with something growing over there that upsets them, you know? And so, it just, it, it's one of those things that I think we owe to the residents that if they, they've got somebody that's not caring for their lawn and they wanna complain about it, we should probably go check it out. Talks?
Yeah, weed police, okay. I mean, we're, we'll, let's, I, I think we've debated it. Let's bring it up to, you know, we're not here to vote on it tonight. We're here to just get it out of committee, if we will. So, there's enough support to move it forward. Let's move it forward and we'll debate this at a ordinance change and we'll deal with it then. Maybe Lynn can give us this list of weeds and trees and whatever else is banned. But again, I, I preach this over and over. We're subject to the same rules. So if they're underneath your dock, then we're gonna have to weed it out too. If they're in that thing in the back here by the, by the water, then you gotta get them weeded out there too. I mean, we gotta practice what we preach, we're not above...
Man-grows aren't in that list.
I know, but, you know, but, but it's not just man-grows back there. We just cleaned out the, the, uh, the drainage behind the city hall and it was filled with garbage, so...
And, and I don't think there's any dispute in that. If somebody complains about something on our property, we'll check the list. And if it's on the list, we will remove it. But we're not in the weed police business either. So, I mean, we're not gonna go tampering the entire community looking for the 106 noxious weeds.
I just think this gives it, if there is a legitimate complaint, we actually have a list that we can refer to. Sorry, it's not on the list. I can't help you.
And that's really all this is.
Right. I understand that, okay. All right, Lynn asked for citizen comments. Citizens? Okay, to the, uh, to the council.
Did we resolve the, the original drywall issue?
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, Frank, we, we didn't debate that. I, I, I agreed with you, nobody else said anything, so...
That's an, that's an exception, permanent exception.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's too small. It's, it's, I mean, it's like three pieces of sheet rock, you know? You're gonna pull a permit because you're changing your kitchen, you know?
I mean, you can, that's, that's a matter of me.
Right?
I suggest we remove it.
Well, the county building code, I believe, is... I believe it's 400 square feet, the building code.
Yeah, that's a, that's a whole, whole look. This is, this is a wall.
Yeah, it's, it's... Maybe if, if we put, uh, whatever that is below, you know, the, the county's, the state building code, they, they make you get a permit for... And all this was to do was kind of add some things like, you know, you don't gotta get a permit for wallpaper. It didn't say that, but, uh...
Any reason we wanna deviate from what the county says?
No, I, I mean, that's what we should do.
Yeah.
Whatever that...
But why do we even wanna write that? The county already says it. I mean, why do we need that in our code?
It's because our code is different from the county's. We, we are able to make exceptions.
Yeah, so... Or take it out, that's fine.
Wanna get back to us on what the county says? Okay, so we'll debate this at a, but there's definitely questions for what the rights were, what it should be. Anything else? Anybody else have anything else on page 10? Yes?
I was just gonna comment that this last discussion about the weed police and how much we're doing, I think that sort of comes back to what we said in the, in the executive summary, that you need to be looking at the strategic code. Goal number three was aesthetics and community. We want to, what is it, create a vibrant, vibrant, evolving city and an atmosphere that invites to their sense of community and quality of life. And if I understand, nothing's changed since I was on council, the most common complaints that Patty hears from our residents is code enforcement. And a lot of it's stuff like this. So, this is where we need to take a look at. What do our residents want? What is it that we're here to do? If they want the code enforcement, if they want aesthetics to be part of the code enforcement and they've expressed that and they're willing to pay for it, I think this kind of thing that we were trying to incorporate here. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? Back to council. Wanted to your point, um, I, I agree with you, but to a point, I said it earlier. We need to keep in mind that this is private property and there's private property rights. We cannot over-regulate. And I'll say this over and over again, we can't over-regulate as a city. So, you know, yeah, you, you might not like the fact that your neighbor has a wildflower, but if it's not on this invasive species list, well, so be it. So your neighbor has a wildflower. Maybe it's something you wouldn't have, be caught dead in your front yard having, but that's their choice. They paid for that property. Unless the city's gonna buy up all the property, make it common area like they do, and you're shaking your head, Lynn, because there's no way in hell we're gonna do that. You know, it's your property. Remember, you can put a tomato garden in your front yard. So, let's be reasonable and I think every, we have a nice city. So I think if we're reasonable, everybody will be fair. But if we start saying, you can't have a wildflower, somebody's gonna show you how they can have a wildflower. And, you know, but the, I think we're gonna be on the losing end of that battle because you can talk about aesthetics all you want, but the person has to write to their property and to do with it what, pretty much what they want, as long as they're not creating a health hazard or being, you know, problematic. Mr. Riley? Did you wanna say something? Oh, you look like you want to say something. Anybody else? Remove off this page then. So we have a little bit of debate coming up on this, but I think we move it forward with the comments and we get the weeds list for everyone. Item 11, uh, page 11.
In 10-2, that there's always this conflict, uh, to put a definition of immediate family because if we catch a contractor or someone, they'll say, well, I'm this person's cousin. Well, so I can work on this house because I'm his cousin. So, I, the intent is to try to say, it's gotta be someone, you know, I'm your cousin or... And the brother law. Because people will, even when the code enforcement guy goes there on a Sunday, they'll tell him, well, it's my cousin, so he's okay. So, the thought process was to put something in there of definition of immediate family.
So, I have no problem with that because I, I, I've heard that exact problem. We can define what the immediate family is. I don't know how you prove it. I mean, if he says, he's my brother, well, you know, what do you do? Say, shall we pay for it? You're not gonna do that. But I guess I take it to another level here. Why do we ban construction on Sundays? So let me be the devil's advocate here. Why? Why? We're not a religious community. So why can you build on Saturday, but you can't build on Sunday? And don't tell me noise, because we just went through 115 days of the old summer. So what about, why do we have an issue with build, with making noise? But yet, the property owner can make noise. So your landscaper can't come and run the leaf blowers and all the other noise-making stuff, but you could run the same thing. I just don't see the difference. I really don't. I know that's not what people want to hear, but it's not right. Because we allow other noise on Sunday. We do. We have. And yet, you know, we have this thing like you can't work on Sunday. So a guy's like wallpapering? Power washing a driveway? He's painting the wall outside your house? I mean, that's not, you know, I could see if you're doing demolition, but some of this stuff doesn't even make noise. And I know we have an exception for emergencies, but I'm just bringing up the point of why.
I really personally don't feel like we should open up contractors on Sundays because you do have excessive noise then. And you also have vehicles parked all over the streets on Sundays when you may have your family. Because even though we're not a religious community, a lot of people that live here are very religious and they like to have like a Sunday brunch or a Sunday event with their family after church and stuff. I don't see why we want to have construction workers. They can have one day off as well as the entire city of Beller Beach. I do not and will not, you know, support having any kind of contractors work on Sunday unless it is an emergency of somebody's parking over their AC.
I think another reason why is because if we allowed it, they would do it seven days a week. It's, it's one day. You give them a break. You give the neighborhood a break. Make it a little bit quieter. Yeah, you're always going to have that guy that owns his property and breaks out his pressure washer or, you know, it's going to make noise. But in general, I, uh, I would prefer not to hear roofers banging out a, a brand-new roof on Sunday. If they could do it on Saturday, I'm good with that. But it's nice to have a quiet day.
I, I mean, 100% agree with, with Vice here and with John Best. We need one day a week where we have a break. I mean, Monday through Saturday, it's nothing but contractors pick up trucks and turtles and up and down the roads. Now factor in spring break, snowbirds, whatever. I mean, let's give ourselves one day a week where it's, it's a break. And I agree. Yeah, it's not going to stop my neighbor from being out there at 7:30, more than is long. I just kind of chalk that one up to being a good neighbor and I, I understand that. But I don't need to have five lawn care contractors going up and down the road with the weed raggers putting, lighting all the doors on their way.
And let me make it clear, I'm not advocating a change. I'm ready, we're looking at code and I'm asking a question. And I'm going to turn this to legal. We're not a religious community. I want Saturday for quiet. Next guy wants Wednesday because he's a doctor. Do doctors still take off Wednesday? Doctors used to take off Wednesday. So maybe doctor wants Wednesday off and the next guy wants Tuesday. So we all have a good reason. And some guys don't care if there's noise seven days a week. So what's our, again, I'm not advocating it. So don't misquote me, anyone. But what's our legal standing to say, we're so nice, we don't want any noise on Sunday? Why? Go to City Gulf Boulevard on Sunday morning with the motorcycles. You want to hear noise? Frank's nodding his head. He knows, okay? It's non-stop.
Well, I, I, I think everyone on the councils agree that we should have one day of peace and, try to get peace and quiet. I mean, coming over that bridge, I can hear it on H U. I agree 100%. Going down Goff Boulevard with the radios on the brakes now, okay? It's loud, but, um, I think we're all in agreement that Sunday's an appropriate day not to have construction. I, I think we should just legalize it. So, I mean, sorry, Doc. I'm not getting wind. When I was, when I was out campaigning, Mr. Mayor, I had so many people say to me, why did they ever move the quiet time from 7:00 AM, from 8:00 AM to 7:00 AM? That was a big concern. And if you live in construction, Mr. Matt, yes, you'd probably hear construction equipment at 6:50 in the morning, okay? And there's a lot of residents here that, the average age is 50, 55, 58, or retired. They don't want to hear that at 7:00. But I understand, I work in the construction. You want to get, you want to get going. I think one day a week, Sunday's the appropriate day to have. And I, maybe you ought to even think about pushing the quiet time.
To your point, why not? If that's what you just heard, I mean, I don't know who said, this council didn't say it, it wasn't the council before that. I'm looking at Glenn because I know he was on that council. I don't think you changed the quiet time to 7:00. That's been, it's been 7:00. It's been a long time. I know when I built my house, it was 7:00. And I didn't start at 7:00 out of deference to my neighbors. I wouldn't do that. I could have, but I didn't. But, I mean, maybe we should say 7:30, 8:00. I mean, 7:00 is a little early.
Yeah, I, I, I think there's something, some merit to that. Because what happens is, yeah, they don't start hammering until 7:00, but they're positioning their equipment and stuff at 6:30, 4:00, 7:00. So, I mean, we may revisit that. I, I think trying to tie a religious aspect to the conscientiousness for a Sunday isn't a good argument. I, I think what you need to go back to is, this is a working community. People are working. Yeah, the average age is 55, but this is a working community. And many of those people work on Saturdays. You know, they may slide and have Sunday and Monday off, but many of those people are working on Saturdays. So Monday through Saturday, people may not be there at whole to enjoy the quiet time. So, but Sunday is typically a good overlap for, for people having time off.
No argument. But I'm throwing it, Fred, I don't expect an answer tonight, but we're looking at code. Why Sunday and what's our legal justification for it? Again, we know we're not a, I don't expect an answer now, but can we do it? I mean, because I don't want somebody saying, you're holding back my construction project by one day times, you know, eight months. So what's the justification? We're not a religious community. Oh, I know, you like to have your brunch. Well, that's wonderful. Some people like to have it on Saturday. Some people like to have it on Tuesday. They have the ladies over, whatever. It doesn't matter. Everybody's got a reason. So my question is, is what's our legal justification for being able to do this? I'm totally in favor of making it quiet. I'll even vote for Saturday to be quiet too. Um, but, you know.
You're making a motion?
Yeah. Oh, no, no motions tonight. It's just work session. But you can if the next meeting. I mean, and Frank's point is right. I mean, you know, it, it, this, it's illegal, but this, this noise pollution from Gulf Boulevard, I mean, you, you could hear it down the block. It's, it's unbelievable. Go ahead, Fred.
May I say something, Fred, before you do?
Of course.
Before, um, you start digging into this and spending taxpayers' money looking all of this up and everything, does the council ever want to change it from Sunday? I mean, I'm not in favor of it, so I don't know why we would spend taxpayers' money even looking it up. It doesn't matter, the reason, it's the day of the lead that no contractors are supposed to work. So I'm not in favor of you doing any additional work on it and spending our taxpayers' money on it either. So that's just me.
Well, if you can't equivocate a legal precedent for that, now I am in favor of knowing why we're doing what we're doing before we get a lawsuit. So tell me. I, I hate to put you on the spot, but Councilwoman Swope said it doesn't matter. It sure as hell does matter, okay? Why, or we, why do we have Sunday as the day of rest? This is Ocean Grove, New Jersey, so.
It, it's not an issue right now. And I think that's a good point that Reeve is bringing up here. Uh, it, it's not an issue right now. It's on the books, it's been on the books, it hasn't been challenged. So we don't.
Mr. Gunn, I'm challenging it. It's, it's a code review, planning and zoning code review. I'm bringing it up. They didn't order it up, I'm bringing it up.
Well, if you're going to do that, why are we closed on Sunday?
Why?
I mean, you can challenge this until it's too late in the morning, but it's, it's a waste of time. I mean, doesn't council have the right?
Excuse me? Tell me what you just said. This is an open meeting. What was the comment that you just made?
I just said this very, and I was going to make, why are we closed on Christmas? Why can't we have construction on Christmas Day?
Why can't you?
And another religious thing?
Well, I don't know.
I don't see why we're even considering changing this.
Okay.
Has anybody raised an issue with it?
I'm raising an issue. I want to know the legal justification, how, why, what, on what we base this closure. Because if I'm building a project, every day that I'm closed, it's costing me money. Go ahead.
There are only two people in this room, two bodies in this room that can give him direction. One is the city manager and the rest is the city council.
This is a meeting and I'm asking him a question. And he's being paid by the hour law. You argue whether he can answer it. I've asked you a question. I didn't ask you to do any work. I asked a question. So tell me what I can do.
It sounded to me like you were giving him direction.
No, I didn't give him direction. I asked him a question. You, it doesn't matter to you because you're not an attorney. You flew boxes for him.
Can we, can we keep one order, point of whatever it is called?
President Chase, can you?
Can we just stop this? Stop. I'm tired of the big rig. Mama bear's coming out, stop.
Stop the mama bears, Doc. That's wearing me down just as much, I agree.
Mama bear's not going to rock on you. Now stop it right now. Let's act like grown men, not children. And let's talk to Fred and let him do it. Stop, come on.
Are we looking for a direction? Are we looking for a direction from the city attorney?
I'll say it the third time because you're a slow learner. I asked a question. I want an answer. Now, am I not allowed to do that, Mr. Gunn? You want another 1983 suit? I'm asking you a public question, what our legal basis is, which I don't expect you to probably have an answer right now, but if you know it, tell me. And then if this council wants you to research it, that's fine. I'll be damned if I can't answer the city ma, ask people a question.
Every question I've heard is some sort of direction for him to do a.
Mr. Gunn, you're not chairing this meeting. You're out of order. I asked a question. Sit there and be quiet. Mr. Riley?
My good manners.
That's what you want. Show everybody a smart yard. Mr. Lawyer? Go ahead.
Is that directed at me?
No, at Mr. Gunn. I want to be. Go ahead.
My good manners stopped me from interrupting you because.
No, you have authority.
Well, the, the council needs to be able to discuss things or debate things among themselves. So I, I've been waiting to give an answer. So I'll do that. The, as I understand it, the code now provides for Sunday to be the quiet day. To my understanding, and I'll have to go read it again, but it's not tied to a religious holiday. So if it's not tied to a religious holiday in the code, then I, I think you have a, some basis for, uh, leaving a sleeping dog where it is. That's, and that may not sound like a very good legal answer, but, you know, it, it, to me, it's not unreasonable for a community to want to have at least one day a week where you, you do have some peace and quiet. So, you know, that, that's my answer. And I, I think what you will find looking at the code provision is, that's probably been in place for a long time and it probably was never tied to a religious holiday. I understand what you're pointing out. I understand that very well. And, you know, it, it becomes one of these things. It's, it's an arguable issue. You know, arguably, should you change it? Yeah. Um, y'all are arguing about whether you should change it or not. Uh, I, again, I, some, sometimes, and this isn't meant as criticism, it's only meant as observation, y'all, uh, debate vigorously things and that, there's nothing wrong with that. That's what you should be doing and what you should ultimately, uh, the point you should arrive at is what is in the best interest of, of the citizens you represent. So I, I will, to, uh, Councilmember Swope's point, out of curiosity this evening, I will look at it. I, I will not charge the city for looking at the code provision. And if there's something that is glaring, I will make a point to come back and tell you that. So that's a good compromise. And now you can continue debating it or you can move on to the next point.
Point of information. What I hear from you is saying that we can establish a day of rest where no noise.
No, I, my understanding is the city council long ago already established it.
And it's perfectly legal. Correct?
Yes, I would say it's arguable, that the point Mayor Manzo's making is a valid point.
I understand the point he's making, but what, bottom line is there's seven council people. If, if seven people want Sunday or the majority wants Sunday, Sunday will be the day. If the majority wants Wednesday, Wednesday will be the day. Correct? It doesn't have anything to do with religion.
If you want to change the quiet day, then you probably, you would have to do it by ordinance, but conceivably, you could change it. My, my point is, and, and this is not a religious comment, but the, there has traditionally been a day that is, um, a quiet day, for want of a better phrase, in most cities. I mean, there was a time when, in the deep south, it was the, you know, Bible belt and the laws were very much oriented towards that. I think that has in many ways gone out of favor and probably due to court cases. But you could conceivably change it. I, I will, you know, rather than debate it endlessly, I will look at it on my own, uh, inquisition. And if there's something glaring, I will tell you that.
Fair enough. Any other comments? Citizens? Council? Page 12. Page 12 wraps into page 13 on prohibitive, prohibitive activities. And one of them is motorized vehicles. And one of those issues, well, um, there's a suggestion that we add ADA compliant mobility chairs. I think that's an excellent suggestion. The second thing is that I believe, and they may, I know this was up for change, I don't know if the state legislature actually changed it, but they were talking about, well, right now, motorized bicycles are considered bicycles. So we permit bicycles on our beach. As of right now, a motorized bicycle per the state is allowed to ride on our beach. So I'm not sure if that's going to change from the state. They were talking about it, but I don't know if they actually got it through. So if not, that's something that is under their law permitted on our beach, whether we like it or not.
Right, you would have to ban bicycles in general that goes on the beach if you wanted that. Sheriff's position is the state law says, motorized bicycle is bicycle is bicycle, so.
So that's the only point I have on 30-144. The rest of it looks fine to me.
30-53. Why are we eliminating hot-dive galvanized? What about tensile strength, these hot-dive galvanized, over aluminum, brass, bronze, and special things do?
stainless steel? That was discussed at the code meeting, and I'm trying to remember who brought that up. Somebody brought it up. Because it does deteriorate.
Yeah, it's probably a corrosion concern, not a tensile strength thing.
No.
Probably, you could get around it by just saying marine-grade or quality hardware. You don't have to specify whether it's stainless plums, or zinc, or whatever. You just go with marine-grade quality hardware. Probably, it's all gold.
What's the county suggest? Again, we should be with what they're doing. I don't know either. Beller Beach is different than the rest of the county.
I'll check to see what the county says, but, you know, today, people building docks or doing other things like stainless and stuff, because the bolts, the hot-dip galvanized, it does deteriorate. It's all right.
Just need clarification. Just need clarification.
Right. Aluminum. And on the last page, under regarding seawalls and docks, would this be a good time to add in language that all seawall repairs and modifications shall conform to the neighboring seawall?
That's Dave.
Say that one more time.
Add something in there that all seawall repairs and modifications shall conform to the neighboring seawalls.
I would say yes, that makes sense, but in all reality, that is not the case. You already have seawalls there burying heights and depths out, and I understand where you're going with that, but I don't think it's practical. I don't think you could, I mean-
This should be done before, too.
You could make that, you've got a cracked cap, and now you have to move your entire seawall. So, I would say probably not. Unless you've got some, I don't know. I think everyone's responsible for their own, and even though the, it doesn't look great, I don't like blue.
Well, I'm just saying, so, I'm just trying to find conformity with the law.
Exactly. So, I see where you're going, and, but again, I think that the problem is, is your neighbor has concrete, and you replace yours with the-
Long pile.
Yeah, the aluminum or vinyl, whatever it is, the sheets. Yours is automatically going to not line up with your neighbor's. So, that's kind of the case. Would you agree with that, Mr. Reed?
Yes. And today, somebody puts in a new seawall, they're typically raising it 12 inches because of water flow. You know, if we, the city replaced the art seawall on Belle Isle and Harrison, and we raised it 12 inches because they had overflowed.
Now, what I will say is, whenever it's the neighbor's turn, that's going to encourage them to bring it up and make it match. Because eventually, they're going to be like, like I am right now. I'm going to be one of the odd men out, you know, because I've got an older seawall.
Just thought-
Anybody have any other comments on, we could do page 12 and 13 together, because they kind of say go into each other. Anybody have any comments? Do you plan?
I had a question on section 30-185. The last one regarding seawalls and docks, the suggestion there about the wording, 30 days to get an assessment, not 30 days to remove or repair. I can appreciate that, but I think you need to put a deadline on that somehow, or otherwise a person just comes forward and says, hey, I've got an assessment, and I'm not happy with that, and I need to get another one. And then 30 days stretches into 60, and I need to argue 20 days. So, I mean, is there, is there a deadline somewhere that I'm missing that hasn't put the brakes on the process there?
Well, as an example, Vice Mayor and I went, what, three or four months ago on a boat ride, and we gave notices to all those homeowners, and some of them have taken care of the situation, some of them haven't. But I think giving, you know, giving them the opportunity to get an assessment, we don't need five of them. If, as an example, the seawall that fell in on Bay Shore, which Rodney knows, and I know Dave knows, we had told them through a code violation that the seawall was bulging. It just didn't get repaired before the bulge had bulged out and fell in the water. So, I think, you know, making them get an assessment in a 30-day time period is reasonable.
And also, it's going to be tough to, I mean, just being realistic, sometimes you can't get anybody out.
Right.
And it's situational, but I think at some point, you need to say 120 days, or even 365 days to complete a repair. I mean, otherwise, how long can that stretch out? The guy says, hey, I got my assessment. I've satisfied your city requirements. Well, in the meantime, the neighbors-
Well, as an example, right now, to get the seawall put in or dock, they're months out. So, maybe that is a caveat that we put in there, you know, maybe 100, maybe days after the assessment it has to be repaired, if the assessment stays.
Whatever. It may have prevented what happened.
Yeah. Well, they had already got what happened. Those, the people that were going to buy that house had already signed the contract to fix that seawall. It just happened five days before they closed on. And that was one of the days where, you know, we had a lot of rain.
And there's a suggestion here on 30-185, actually, there's two suggestions. One is to update timeframe, that Marina Slip shall remain vacant without a boat. I think that has merit to it. And then it says, and I'm not sure about the second one, suggestion to add language to require removal of a lift upon vacating Marina Slip. I believe we spoke about that at prior work session, about people selling the lift to the incoming person. So, I would hate to see somebody rip it down, only to say the next guy says, yeah, I would love to have that, and would maybe bought it. So, he shouldn't abandon it, or, you know, he should, but, you know, if we can broker a deal, or at least get in touch with each other, that's what we spoke about, I remember, I asked.
Right. And realistically, unfortunately, right now, there's a person at the Marina that hasn't got a boat in the slip, but he's stuck in England, can't come back to the United States. So, he's paying his rental fee, but he just can't come back to put his boat back there. So, that's extenuating circumstances to me, so I would think you, but if it's just, you know, if you don't build a slip, I believe it's, Patty, do you remember, is it 30 or 60 days?
30. It's 30 days unless you're getting repairs, or taking a long trip, and you have a written-
Right. So, I don't think it's a bad idea to put something in there. It's got more to it.
Maybe with that caveat that you just said, because there's a perfect example, or, you know, somebody decides to take a trip with their boat, you know, around the world. I mean, they might be gone for six months, and they still want it. I think what we're trying to prevent is somebody from brokering that slip, or, you know, keeping it and, you know, using it as a chip to sell, you know, with their property or something like that. That's I think what we're trying to prevent, right?
Right.
Well, if we can get language, I mean, I think that would work, so. Anybody else have any comments? Citizens? Council? Onto zone in page 14. Lynn, maybe you can help me out here. Because I didn't, there's no background on section 94-6H. Says no parking with 100 feet of Gulf Boulevard.
Yeah, one of the planning, some board members brought up that not allowing vehicles to park at 100 feet of Gulf Boulevard, because this is an example, it makes it tough to get out, you know, especially if it's two-way traffic. So, what they were asking is, no, no, like landscapers or whoever. That's what they were trying to leave there.
Where are they going to park? The corner house, where is he going to park? The landscaper's always parked in that spot. And, I mean-
That was brought up by one of the members.
I'll tell you what they're currently doing, is they're pulling all the way up to the stop sign, to the point where you can't even see it, nor can you see to make a right or to see traffic coming towards you, although, whenever they're parked on the right side of the right street. And that's what the complaint is. I get it, it's probably somebody who lives on 22nd, they do it all the time. But they need to, I don't know about 100, but they definitely need to leave some room where you can see both directions.
There's already state law for that, and that's why I'm questioning the 100, because what you're doing is you're taking two properties, all the 102s, all the 103s, one of which is mine, okay? And you're basically making that person unable to park any vehicles in front of their house, and that diminishes their property value. It makes things incredibly inconvenient. Now, there is a state law. You can't park up against a stop sign. In case anybody forgot from the driving exam, it's 30 feet. So, if they're parking within 30 feet of a stop sign, that's illegal. And if they're parking within 20 feet of the intersection, that's illegal. Now, that's an enforcement issue for our city. Making it bigger isn't the situation. I mean, you actually, I'm thinking of one, my neighbor, whose house I look at, his driveway happens to be on the east side of his property, number 103. He wouldn't even be able to park a car, you know, under any circumstance. And that's not right. If we're going to do that, that's going to lead to potential variances and undertakings. So, I don't think 100 feet, there's no good reason for that, when the state says 50 feet, I'm sorry, 30 feet by a stop sign, 20 feet of an intersection. It's an enforcement issue.
And maybe the stipulation in our ordinance is state guidelines. That's the logic.
I don't care about the 100 feet, I just don't want blocking there.
That should do that.
That's just what was brought up.
I think that's what they were trying to accomplish.
But do we, do we need to, again, I'm going to ask this question, do we need to put in our ordinance stuff that's already in the state law? I mean, that's a driving law. You know, you don't need to be redundant here. The state already has that law. It says no parking within 30 feet of a stop sign in Florida, 20 feet of an intersection. I mean, do we need to repeat that? I don't care, it's no big deal to pass it as an ordinance, but do we need to?
Maybe what we do when we update the ordinances, and we always do an updated flyer, we put that information in there. We don't have to put anything in the ordinance.
I was going to say, you know, the state guidelines are kind of like a minimal guideline. Our real concern is the bigger contractor vehicles. When you have a lawn care guy pulling his duly trailer, and it blocks out, and you can't, as you're coming down the road, you can't see the sign, or he obstructs your view of traffic going across Gulf Boulevard, that's the issue. So, maybe language that just kind of makes it a little more restricted for, yeah, you're staying with the state guidelines, but you kind of neck it down a little bit to restrict the parking of larger commercial-grade vehicles. I mean, a car is not an issue, because you can typically see other cars. But when a guy parks his duly there with a double-wide trailer there, that's the issue. So, maybe some restricted language.
The other thing is, what I don't see in here, something we've been talking about too long, which is parking across the street, two cars. As Lynne Tara came, told us that she did a study, I guess with Chief Burton, that you can't get a fire truck if we have two cars parked opposite each other. That's not in our ordinances. And if somebody gets an overnight parking permit, or anything else, landscapers, that can't be allowed to happen. That is a safe, that's a real safety hazard. So, it's not in our law right now, and it's not a state law. So, you could be legally parked on both sides of the street, and if somebody just comes out a little bit, I mean, I know it from when we did the last citywide yard sale, it was hard to get a car through it. I can't even imagine if you have a fire truck, so. So, that I think we should put in here. I don't know how you worded it to make it clear, but it shouldn't be there. And if you get an overnight parking permit, if you're going to have a party for 20 people, you can park up and down the side of a road, but you can't park across from each other. And maybe we can put a picture or something, but they can't do it. That was one of the complaints that were getting-
We don't allow overnight parking anywhere on our streets, Lynn. Is that correct? For anyone. It doesn't matter if you're having an event or not. Now, you can have it up till a certain time. But then those permits, or that permission to park on the street, is always on the site that the event is being held, not on both sides of the street, correct?
That's what it's supposed to be.
Lynn, is it Mike? I can't hear you.
That's what it's supposed to be. There is no overnight parking permit. You know, somebody's got an issue, we'll let them park, bring their car and park in the city hall parking lot.
Two landscapers, okay? What Glenn's talking about, where you get a guy who has this huge trailer, huge truck, he parks, I've seen this, I mean, it's happened on our block. Sometimes they just come at the same time, and one guy's on one side, one guy's on the other. A fire truck's knocking through. It's just not happening. And they're both legally parked, maybe. I mean, the one might be a little close to the corner, but they're both legally parked. So, that, to me, I just, that's a safety hazard. We've talked about it here, so there's no, you know, not anything new. That's, that was the only point, so.
Maybe we could create some language in here that says the adjacency, you know, because as an example, we'll just go down the street, and there's a house on your street on the left side, if you're going down the street. But the landscapers park there, but up by your house, your landscapers park there, so it's, it's still one, but it's a distance to get through, so someone could get it through. But maybe it's adjacency that we set the statement.
However we can word it, I just think there's-
But one other thing I want to bring up, there was some discussion about artificial turf. Our code says no artificial turf in front of that. There is a house that has some artificial turf, and I learned today that there's another house that's talking about putting $32,000 worth of artificial turf.
Zero escaping. It requires no reclaim water or-
Right. So, you know, we need to, our current code says no artificial turf. And I don't think, I don't think we want the green stuff that you can go to Home Depot and get off the road.
But if you have field turf, that's $36,000, it looks, I mean, they have it at football stadiums, it looks pretty good. But I wouldn't want it on my neighbor's house.
Right. So, I think the council needs to make a decision, you know, how do you want to handle that with the artificial turf? Because there are a couple people that have put it in. There's a good example of a whole yard of it on Gulf Boulevard. To include the rightway, it probably, what is that? Probably 1200 block, which is somewhere, you'll see it. It's been there many years. But, you know, what's the council's feeling on that?
Rodney?
I personally don't care, I'm fine with it. It would alleviate the weed problem and the landscaping problem. So, seemingly, we should all get it there, and we'd all be happy.
Should get a report.
And it conserves water. My only concern is, I'm going to defer to you, Fred. I mean, drainage is a potential issue. If it doesn't have the proper drainage, it could be a real problem. But, I mean, they build, you know, beautiful multi-million dollar stadiums with it. It's not like, say, it's ugly. I mean, I agree with Lynn, the stuff, you know, that you get for a couple dollars a yard at Home Depot isn't really what we want. But, again, legal basis, it's not our property. What can you legally say to people about, they want to make it look like the Brady Bunch and have artificial turf, like Mr. Brady had in the backyard? So, what do we do? You don't remember that, do you? You're too young.
Well, you asked for this. Marcia, Marcia. I don't mean to use the same stock answer, but I will. If this is something that concerns you, then let me see if we can find someplace else that has addressed it, so that we're not reinventing the wheel. Your, the point you make is, to me, is fine. I'm a property rights person, but, you know, you, the one basis you would have for doing something is if it creates a drainage issue for your neighbors. So, that, to me, is a legitimate basis to regulate it in some way. But let me take a look and see if I can find another community that's addressing it.
Right. And most artificial turfs, even the stadiums, have to be replaced every five years because they do get drained a lot, so.
I mean, but now they have, you know, it's not just artificial, there's like rubber compounds and round-up tire and everything else in there to make it easier to walk. I mean, it's come a long way since it used to, but Fred, if you can, you know, have a look into it.
I've got a question for the council, if that's okay. We keep going back to, we're not going to tell our neighbors what to do. We're not going to pick on colors and shapes and sizes and all that, but is that, we currently have code that says you can't do it. Is that right?
Right. That's correct.
Okay, so, we knowingly have neighbors that are already doing it, and nothing's happened. So, my first question is, is why have we not addressed it? Why are they not in violation and have been addressed? That's the first question. The second one is, is that really what we want in our front, on our front logs? Do you want to maintain your grass, and your neighbor's got plastic out front? It's obviously an artificial color. Is that, is that the direction that this council is wanting to go? Do we want to look the other way and let it happen, and just get rid of the code? Or do we, are we welcoming this? I, you know, I want our city beautiful, and I don't think astroturf is beautiful.
The guy who put it in does. Rodney?
Glenn, what's first?
Glenn, I'm sorry, Glenn, I didn't see it.
This, what the vice mayor is asking goes right to the heart of the issue that Rhonda was trying to say here. The vast majority of code enforcement issues originate as a complaint. And the city's responsibility is to always go after those that investigate them and find out and resolve those. But to Rhonda's, what she's trying to get the council to recognize, and I think that's where we're coming around to, is things like weed police, dock baiting police, astroturf police, what are the priorities, where we want to be tasking our- Where we want to be tasking our code enforcement people? What's the cause of doing business? What are the highest priorities? Would we rather be going after the guys of the double wides parking and restraining traffic going down the residential road? Or do we want that guy out looking for AstroTurf? So, at some point, we need to sit down with the residents, poll the residents, and it goes back to communications and the strategic plan, and the consensus of, of the council and the city manager and staff, where do we want to devote our, our revenues, our expenditures, our staff, our manpower, that sort of, what are the priorities here? So, you know, very valid question, but, you know, that's, that's something we need to start thinking about. I'm sorry, thank you.
Anyone else? Rob?
No, I agree with Glenn. I don't think this is a high priority, because, you know, and I agree, you know, AstroTurf is not my choice of lawn. But then again, you know, somebody, one of my neighbors has, you know, the rocks all over their driveway, or rocks in their vegetation, and that's not my choice either. So, who's to say that AstroTurf versus rocks, which one's better? It's all opinion, and it's just this council's opinion, but maybe two councils from now all have AstroTurf. So, I think, I think it's an opinion thing. So, to me, I'd say, let them put AstroTurf in their front yard if they want. I don't think we should ban it, but unless it becomes a drainage issue, and that's, then that's where it becomes a problem for your neighbors. So, I don't think that should be allowed to.
Yeah, I wouldn't think, you know, AstroTurf is not gonna be a drainage issue, because typically it's put down right on top of the soil, or some drainage substance. A lot of, a lot of, our code does allow it in the backyard, it just doesn't allow it in the front yard. And if you drive around the city, there's a lot of people that have these little golf greens, you know, they're sand filled and there's AstroTurf on top of them. Well, it's not AstroTurf, it's Swallow Turf. It's not the stuff you get at Home Depot, so. And, and we've only got one, it's got a small area in their front yard, and the planning board committee, a couple of them on my line, looked at it. They said, if, if you could establish a quality level, then it's, doesn't really look bad, but if you can't establish some quality for AstroTurf, then it would be very hard to enforce.
I'll, I'll just qualify my statement, too. I don't think it was intent of to, just because you're not enforcing it to remove it, it's still something in your toolbox, and somebody thought about it long ago and thought it was an issue, and maybe you need to do some more critical thinking a little bit later down the road, but it still serves as a placeholder, and if it becomes an issue, again, you still have something in your toolbox to do some critical thinking and discussion and debate. I'm not advocating just because it's not being enforced, you pull it out, because somebody thought about it long ago as an issue, so that's all I'll do, is just qualify.
Great. That's page 14, now, citizens, that's page 14, folks. We're on page 15, the last page. Anybody have any comments? I have one comment, it should be 94-256, which says, 246 temporary structures. With that, I was confused. It talks about moving van and/or trailers. What are we trying to do here?
Well, no, there's a section in our code that says you can have a pod, but you can't have a trailer or a moving van. So, all we're wanting to do is, you know, somebody's moving in or moving out, we're just trying to say that moving vans, pods, U-Haul trailers, they, we kind of put them all in the same bowl, I guess.
For, for me, that's right?
Yes.
Just didn't want to be banning people from moving.
No, no, you have to get a permit, you post it in the, on the trailer or whatever, or the truck, but.
Is that for overnight, or is that just for, if you're gonna move three hours of stuff, you need a permit?
It's, it's for seven days. Am I right? Are you seven days? Thank, yeah, they can get a permit for seven days for a pod or a.
Well, it's for a move, not a drop off. Okay, all right, that's fine.
They'll drop a pod and then drive away. But our code only talks about pods, it doesn't talk about the U-Haul truck or anything else. So, we need to add that to our code.
Anybody have any issues with that? Anything else? Citizens? I think that takes care of it, unless there's stuff that, anybody have comments of stuff that should be in here that is not in here? Council? There are nothing. Okay. Patty? Hope you got all that. She's nodding, okay. So, we'll bring this in as a series of ordinance changes over a period of time, some stuff being more important than others, and some stuff still being open for discussion, so that's where we're going. All right, next we have, the final item is the discussion, well, actually, we have two items. We have the discussion of the sign ordinance, and then if there's any other miscellaneous from any of the council members. It's nine o'clock, we've been going for several hours, does anybody need a break? Because this might be a little bit of time. Tim, Eds? Everybody good with that? Nine, it's 9:01, so 9:10? Okay. Item number two is the discussion of the sign ordinance, review of proposed ordinance. I don't know where to begin, because it's a long ordinance, I don't want to necessarily go page by page. Fred, do you wanna, I mean, you're the architect of this, so do you wanna maybe give some overall comments?
Yeah, I would like to make a couple comments, starting out. And this is, is for Frank and Leslie, although I think Leslie may have been here for some of this. Last summer, we had a gentleman that raised an issue about the sign ordinance, and it's something that had been discussed before, but what we did when he raised some questions about political signs, is that we did a resolution that basically said the city was, was going to not enforce that aspect of the sign ordinance, and basically try and do a status quo. The, I was talking to Mayor Manzo a few minutes ago, the guy that approached Lynn, and then I spoke to him several times, is, is a lawyer that was from Bleed, Michigan, and he, he was very learned, he absolutely knew what he was talking about, and he pointed out some things in, in the ordinance that were very legitimate points, and was extremely helpful. And he was also cooperative about, I don't want to cause the city any problems, I'm just, you know, wanting to give you the benefit of my background, and that was very much appreciated. After that, I went through and spent considerable time rewriting the city's sign ordinance, the sign ordinance. What I, the approach I took is, I tried to do several things. One is, I tried to put as much stuff as I could that would preface what you were doing and why. And the reason a lot of that is especially at the beginning of the ordinance, is so that if, if you ever, heaven forbid, have a court case to do with enforcement of the sign ordinance, then you would, would at least have things to do to, that set, would give you the basis to say, we have made every good faith effort that we can to do this consistent with the applicable Florida law and probably even more importantly, federal law and constitutional law. The, so all that, that type of stuff to, or provisions to give the basis for what you're doing and why, why you're trying to comply with the federal law and state statutes, et cetera, that's, that's all upfront in the, the sign ordinance. There's, you know, the fundamental thing you can't do, because the sign ordinance is a, comes down to constitutional right of free speech, is the, the more you can make it about the size of the sign, and for instance, if you designate that this, this is the size of the sign, that, that's what you're regulating. Your regulation is limited to something that is, has nothing to do with the message. And that, that is the key, as far as I'm concerned, to understanding all of it. If you are doing anything that relates to the message, then you're going into what is potentially dangerous waters with constitutional violations, because it's the government regulating or, you know, prohibiting somebody from having their, their constitutional right of free speech. The, the one provision is, I wrote, I, I looked at several different cities, how they handled it, I tried to change our existing code as little as possible, and somewhere along the line, you've probably seen a redline version of the document, and if you, you haven't, I'm happy to provide it. But that redline version is always, to me, helpful, because it shows, you know, what you've changed, and, and it gives you some perspective. There's.
Excuse me one second. Are you okay, Leslie? You getting worried?
Okay.
Okay.
There's, you know, we, we can certainly discuss the various things that are in the sign ordinance. I, I put in a severability provision at the end, and the severability is typically something you, you always try to put in, because if there is a term that is, you know, inconsistent with the law, or in this case unconstitutional, then you would have a basis, if you're ever in court, to say, the, the whole law shouldn't be struck down, but that provision, okay, Judge, if you strike it down, that the rest of it is still intact, that's common, and that, that's trying to mitigate damages. The, the one thing I will say, and, and this was, I discussed with Lynn numerous times, is, and I'll just say it very clearly, as clearly as I possibly can, these, these cases related to free speech and, and signs is an absolute quagmire. And I spent a lot of time looking at a lot of cases, I mean, two of you are lawyers and you've read Supreme Court cases, and oftentimes they're 40 or 50 pages long, and that, that tends to be a long read. The, the thing that is, was confounding in writing this is, there are a lot of cases at both the federal court level and at the US Supreme Court that relate to the legal standards for the sign ordinance, or for sign, sign ordinances across the board. There's, of course, some seminal cases, and I tried to reference several of them, and in, in saying that if you pass this, you're trying to comply with those important cases. But I, again, will emphasize, in my opinion, this, it's an absolute quagmire, and if you adopt this or a version of this, and in the future, there's ever an issue, what I would do is the same thing we did last summer, is try to appeal to a reasonable person and find a, some way to, to address their concern. But that isn't always the way it happens. There, there are, you know, groups that, and I'm not gonna pick one, but I will say there's organizations that, at times, this is what they do, they litigate over things like this that are constitutional issues. In Haynes City, completely different from the sign ordinance, but we had a longstanding ordinance that related to where somebody could have a, a church. And it was basically church zoning. And the group that approached us was from, I'm pretty sure Dallas, and I ended up working with their attorney, and what they did is contacted the city, and basically, this was a law from, I would say, the 40s, 50s, and they said, are you aware that this law in Haynes City infringes on the constitutional right for people to have a church? And we had a discussion about that, and ultimately, what we were able to work out is if Haynes City needed to update their code provision related to that, and they were extremely cooperative in, you know, giving us ample time to do that. And the, you know, on the other side of the table, though, it was clear that if, if we didn't, we'd end up in federal court, and we'd be defending that law that was now 50, 60 years old, and that wouldn't have probably ended so good for Haynes City. But I'm, I'm drawing a contrast, there's, there's groups like that that are willing to work with you to help you update the laws, and then there are groups that they, they aren't looking to work with anybody, they're looking to file a lawsuit, make, make a federal case out of it, and that's where it would be, in federal court. I'll just say this in passing, what, in my tenure here in Del Air Beach, one of the things I have really tried to do, and, you know, knock on wood, I think we've been largely successful, is not end up in federal court. There are times that, you know, if, if you have a police department, then you will end up in federal court, because there's gonna be that kind of case, but, you know, federal court case is a pricey affair, and it's something I would hope we would be able to avoid in most circumstances. But I, again, will leave, leave my comments with, this, this is absolutely a very difficult area of the law. Mayor Joe has already told me, there's things he can drive a truck through, and I don't doubt that. But, you know, I, I'm all for modifying it in, in whatever way we need to, to make it as absolutely consistent with the law, but I, again, will say, there are cases every year that modify some aspect of this, and it is, it was really frustrating working with these, because a lot of the cases weren't even consistent. And you would think that you would get some consistency between some of the cases in federal court and the US Supreme Court. To be honest with you, there were some, I didn't even think the Supreme Court was particularly consistent. So, you know, but that's, that's the lay of the land, and that's, that's what we have to work with. So, I certainly am, wanna discuss it and answer any questions you may have.
I have.
Counsel?
Yes, I've read all of this, as well as I'm sure all of the council members did. And my only question is, and it goes to the political sign one, is there's no timeframe stated in here when they can put that sign out? I mean, let's just say, for instance, you know who's running in an election two years from now, so you can put your sign out now, as long as you remove it 30 days after the election? Because that's the way it is right now, written here, that I understand it to be. So, is that the case?
You can have a, a timeframe, and let me get to that part of it. I thought it was for a 30-day period.
It used to be 45.
The 30-day period, to my understanding, is to remove it after the election.
Right, with that, it's after the election.
But there's nothing that states anything prior to the election. That's what I'm asking about, because.
I'm gonna give you not a very satisfying answer. The, the election season is a, has become more and more protracted every cycle, and the, the, the cases go towards what set the election day, and within a reasonable time there's a court case that says 30 days. I don't remember a court case that, that set, the reasonable time before it is 30 days or 60 days. And that's a problem with a lot of the cases. The cases address one aspect of the whole issue. Now, I said it's not gonna be a very satisfying answer. Now I said it's not gonna be a very satisfying answer. And it's not.
No. So let's say I know somebody that's gonna run for mayor the next time our mayor's position comes up in March of 2022. So I can put that sign in my yard tomorrow if I want as long as I remove it thirty days after that election? I mean, that's the way I read this. Okay?
What?
I don't know. Did I miss it as well, how many signs you can put in your yard?
Think you had one.
Yeah, it used to be. I, I looked for that and I...
Used to be one, but I didn't see it. No. I think you did.
And there's a, a case that related to the number of signs you have. And that the, the analysis that people go through, the courts go through, is if there are multiple people living in the home and they have different political views, then why can't multiple people act multiple candidates? And in addition, there's, you know, the presidential election, but you're also likely voting for your senator or your congressional representative and the candidates at the state level. So, you know, in front, what, saying you can only have two signs, for instance, would be an arbitrary...
I'm not debating. I'm just asking if it had fallen out or... No, I understand the reasoning, right? And I think those are the arguments we face all along. And I said, "Okay, so those are the issues we address."
A, a lot of the discussion is against doing things that are arbitrary. So, you know, again, I go back to all the purpose and all the explanation of why you're doing this. I mean, basically, what you're trying to do is have an aesthetically pleasing community that doesn't have a lot of clutter. And that, that is a legitimate basis to regulate. That's why there's all that language in, in this about that type of thing.
I guess to expand a little bit on what Glenn said, I understand like one for president, one for senator. But what happens if I decide to put ten of the same one for like same person? Like if I want ten for president, whoever, ten for mayor? I guess that, that, I would be worried about that instead of multiple people, be multiple signs for one candidate. I don't know if it's a problem. I don't know if that's, is that what you were kinda...
No, no. And, and you're right, but I think the answer is, yeah, you can do that if you want. Your property, you know, to...
Why do you require a free movement expression?
I mean, our rule used to be one per candidate. But you could have, you know, six people in the house of six different candidates or six people in the house all for the same candidate.
Well, I'll say this.
And also you can regulate it.
This, this is a practical matter. Most people want to respect their neighbors and they're not gonna put a hundred signs in their yard. Okay? I said, "Most people." Maybe not you. You're easy to pick on because you're right here. But, um, you know, most people are not going to do that and it's not a problem. Most people are gonna put one or two signs in and that, that would be it. The, the, the problem you have is if, if you start limiting it, then you, you quickly get to, you're limiting the message and that's where you're going to get in trouble.
Fred, to that end, I'm not gonna go through every little way that this can be challenged. I don't think it's, first off, you did an excellent job with this. I know how difficult these cases are because I've read most of them. I've been through this stuff already. I don't know, but I'm gonna give you a strategy that somebody can be listening to and challenge our city with it. Okay? I think anything is subject to challenge. And I think, I said it earlier tonight, the more we call attention to something, the more we may get unwarranted attention. I believe the gentleman came in here, not, it was that same night that the attorney came in, but there was another gentleman and he, Lynn Reeves told him to take out his sign and he put two signs in. Okay? So, you know, gotta be careful. So I'm gonna make my comments somewhat general. There's a few specifics here. But page ten, we talked about, this is an easy one, streamers' ribbons are not permitted, except for the city. Nope. I mean, I don't see it. If they're not permitted, they're not permitted. We're no different than anybody else. City functions, garage sales, so on. We either like them or we don't like them. Take it. I don't care which way, a streamer or balloon doesn't bother me. But, um, just a point. Okay? I mean, cities, uh, signs may be removed by the city. That's what usually gets the, the lawyers calling you or me or Lynn. Um, I'd be real careful about exercising that. Yes, we have the right to remove them, but...
Is it a public property? I think I got it.
Public property, yeah. But we've also removed private property. That's that. That's what, we've got Mr., I'm not gonna say his name, but the lawyer who came in, that sign was removed and he caused a problem or was, I think it was actually removed, if I'm not mistaken. Doesn't matter. It was asked to be removed, same difference. Page eleven, construction signs. I mean, I, you know, I apologize, this is a little long read. I think the size of construction signs are bigger than residential signs. So I'm just wondering why the preference for construction message over political message or my personal message?
No, there's no preference.
Okay. So maybe we should have one sign, you know? Because I do note that sometimes a construction guy has this huge sign, you know? And like, we're limited to, I don't know, two by three or something, you know? And his message is no more important than ours or what have you. So just something to think about, a suggestion. The temporary signs, um, we, we talk about, you know, having temporary signs. And we talk about, it has to be culmination of the event. One of my things that drove through here is you can have temporary signs that don't culminate in an event. You know? And some of it may be political, some of it may not be. Maybe I wanna put up a temporary sign like, "I don't like such and such council member." I could put that there. I could put that, "I love such and such council member. I love the city." Um, "I hate this next city," or "I don't like that guy," or "I love the next city." You can put that a lot. And I think that comes under temporary, maybe non-political signs. But that message, I don't think you can restrict. In fact, I think one of the actual cases was somebody put something up just to that general thing, like he didn't like somebody in the town and the town tried to ban it. And they said, "Well, it's your property. You can put the thing up." So to that, I would just say, you know, a temporary, it may not have a culmination. So if we take a look at this with that in mind. We also, since this was a problem this summer, we had people holding handheld signs and placing multiple signs on properties. This doesn't address handheld signs at all in the city. So I don't know if handheld gets any special deference than a regular one, but I don't see that it should be any different.
When, when they're on the sidewalk, which is public forum, then...
Right. Right. But there were other signs placed in the, in the right of way, et cetera, so...
Well, right of way, you have the basis on...
Yep.
Um, take that.
Content not harmful to minors. Well, there is a thesis, okay? I, I don't know that some kids, what could possibly be harmful to some kids. Um, and other kids might be harmed by just, you know, one little word or something. I mean, the, it, it's hard to define that. I don't know how you even go about doing it. But, um, a bad word isn't necessarily harmful and some of these kids could swear like a sailor. So I, I don't know that you can, again, we get into content here. So it's an issue. Again, we talked about temporary signs for a specific, special, one-time event or function that does not normally occur more than once a year, i.e. sales of property, construction process. Well, you know, again, what about a general message? I'm not gonna go through them, but you can pick a million general messages and it's not there. Some of that might come under politics, some of it may not be. And, um, so we don't define what a political sign really is in here. And then we talked about the ballot for qualified candidates. Some people aren't on the ballot yet, so there's people declared for various positions. Somebody wants to endorse somebody for a mayor who hasn't even qualified yet. I don't know that you can't do it, but, um, I, I think we do limit it because we say validation for qualified candidates. You could just say, "The such and such party is wonderful or the other party is terrible," you know, without going into detail. You could say, "President is great, president is terrible." And that's not really a, an issue. So I, I, that's not really an issue that I think you could restrict. So that's, doesn't get in here. What Glenn said, I mean, I, I didn't see anything in there either. I had how many? Um, there is, doesn't seem to be a limit under political signs. I think we could set something reasonable. I mean, you can't have a front yard of a hundred signs. That's, that's the whole thing that we can do is say, you can have a neon sign and you can have a billboard in your front yard. And you can't have a hundred maybe for one candidate. Okay? If you have a hundred people living in your house, see Mr. Reeves because you got a problem. You know, I think that's a problem. This whole removal and impounding of signs, I would be extremely careful on that and maybe put some language in there that maybe the city manager or the person who seeks to do it, the code person, maybe contacts you in advance and lets you know. It's not like this happens every day. But that's the thing that's gonna trigger the person coming to headquarters, the person, you know, we were lucky last time. That attorney could have very well hit us with a federal suit and he didn't. Again, win or lose it, but we, like you said, just spend a bundle defending it. So that is something that we wanna be careful of. I've kept it general. I think that's my overall comments. You should be able to put up a sign that says pretty much almost whatever you want, like it or not. And we may not like it. You know, you could say you hate your neighbor. You know, it's not a good way to have a good friendly neighborhood, but you could put that in or you could say you love your neighbor. And I, I don't know that that is really fleshed out in here, that that right exists because it's not a one-time event. Maybe I hate my neighbor every day, or maybe twice on Sunday. That's my comments, generally. But overall, I wanna commend you because it's easy for me to look back on this and say, "Here's where there's issues and holes." Overall, there's not a lot of holes. This is pretty good. This is really good. So I, that's what came to mind for me. Anyone else? What?
It was, it was so long, I couldn't remember why I was in a swamp. I mean, I, I understand where we were going. It, it basically boiled down to the political side as well. And I understand why you calcified the language that you did. I mean, it was such a lengthy piece of, of, I couldn't remember why I was in a swamp. And then when I get to eighty-six dash four exemptions, C, it talks about, you know, it talks about that you can have one sign for potential dangers or other signs for the benefit of the citizens as authorized by the city manager. Well, all of a sudden, the city manager is back to the censorship rule because somebody could come out and say, "Hey, I'm trying to make a public announcement to my people and give you specific information." So all of a sudden, he's got to start figuring out whether or not that's a specific message or, I mean, it's, I'm trying to cover all the bases. I think it's in the pauses there. That's my comments. Thanks.
Any others?
Those signs about children being offensive?
Yeah.
A limit in a day, a day and age where a doctor's shoes is offensive. So some kid comes up and says that's offensive, is...
And then there's other kids that it wouldn't be offensive. It might offend you and me more than it'll offend a kid. You know, and then that one who's like a nickel hair curl. So...
One of the greatest legal standards was the way that the pornography and that was the, uh, I'll note, I know it when I see it. And that's what a federal judge said, that, that was his standard. And of course, that's no sacred at all, but, you know, that's what he said.
And I mean, and then that becomes very subjective because yes, you don't want children to be offended, but there's highly sensitive children and then there's kids that, nothing will bother them.
I mean, obviously, as a mother, I'm thinking about my young innocent children. But I mean, if it's a sign that you would bring with you to church, you probably should put it in your yard. Just, I mean, I think like the accord of saying you like the person over another is not offensive, even if that person is offensive in real life. But I think it's common sense here of what is, what can hurt a child and what's appropriate.
But to Robin's point, I mean, there's a Supreme Court case of somebody wearing a shirt to court with that very word and the judge held it contempt. And he won because he said, "Unjudged," the other person said. That's a pretty good expression. That's an adjective and I can say it. And, you know, so it's, I, I hear you. I mean, it, it's not being a good neighbor. I wouldn't put it up if I lived as your next door neighbor or you're the next person, I wouldn't do it. But somebody else may not like their neighbor too much. I think we actually had a situation in town that the neighbors were trading words back and forth. So it, it happens. And I don't think we could step in and, you know, do it. I mean, again, I think sometimes the less said, the better. This is very comprehensive, so, um, I, you know, if you, you know, if you see any merit in what I've said, add it to it. I, I'll vote for it the, the way it is today. I don't think there's anything you're gonna write and it's not your fault that's gonna be bulletproof. Anyone can challenge this thing. And just understand that we do the best we can and you are subject to challenge.
The, the thing to do this, really, is to take this and then do redlined changes based on the notes I've taken and then get that back in front of you to look at again.
Do you, uh, do you have any idea how long that would be? Because we really probably do need to get our sign ordinance back into effect because we just need to have one. So do you have any idea how much additional time you're gonna need? I'm just curious. Are we gonna be able to maybe vote on this in the next city council meeting?
No.
So what are you looking at, probably June? Okay.
Next city council meeting is next, next week.
Yeah, that's true.
It'd be the one, yeah, I can get that back to you.
Okay.
What I'd like to do is make some revisions and then send it out to you. There's, there's a couple of things I wanted to get a little more information from Lynn because I wanted to put in stuff related to the comprehensive plan. That this goes to your aesthetics and your legal standards. But I will do all I can to give you a version that you'll have the red lines and you will have that for the next, or the meeting in June.
Okay.
Fred, um, what if, you go ahead and give us the changes that have been recommended today and, and give it back to us and then why don't we commit to looking at it for a week or two? A firm date so that you're not under the gun whenever it is time to actually vote on this thing? So that you can integrate our changes, bring them in and then resubmit it to us so that we...
Well, y'all, you normally have a meeting, a workshop mid, mid-May, for instance. So what would, in an ideal world, I would have it to you before then so that y'all can, you know, cover it and be done with it and say, "This is the version that we're gonna go with."
Lynn, when do we start the budget processes? Is it May?
June.
June. Okay, so May actually works well. And just for the record, we never suspended the sign ordinance. We urged caution with enforcement of the sign ordinance to the city manager and staff. I think that's what the council did. So the sign ordinance remains in effect on the books that we have now. But obviously, we had some individuals that were putting up full-size banners that went the length of their house, just taunting us. In fact, one person said, "Go ahead and sue me." They were setting us up, some of these people, in my opinion, and other people's opinion. We had a situation with this attorney who said, "I'm gonna put the sign in or else." And, and so we said, "Exercise restraint." We still have ordinance history regarding permanent signs and all kinds of other signs. And just for the record, that's still in effect. Okay? We, we never, as a council, suspended the ordinance.
Well, you did a resolution that recognized that there was an issue related to the political signs. And then the discussion among the council members was, if you're going to modify that provision, y'all ought to look at the rest of it to, to basically bring it up to speed so that, you know, you, you're not fixing just one aspect and you've left nine aspects of it that now make you vulnerable. So that, that's what we tried to do.
Citizens, any comments? Any last com, council comments?
Just, uh, I'd, I'd like to see it before the agenda is released for that one session.
Yes?
There seems to be a conflict between eighty-six dash twos of B, saying signs placed on land for advertising use conducted thereon shall be deemed to be accessory incidents to the land building for use. In the zoning portion, ninety-four dash two fifty-two says you can carry on an occupation...
I'm having a little trouble hearing that.
Oh, I'm sorry. In the zoning portion, ninety-four two fifty-two talks about home occupations are subject to the following limitations. There shall be no sign, exterior display or exterior storage of any materials and no other exterior indication of the home occupation or variation from the residential character of the dwelling. So you can carry on a home occupation, but you can't put a sign up. And it's, this purpose eighty-six dash two sub B sounds like you can. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And it would, it's just something that we need to reconcile.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, follow the zonings in the residential, well, it applies to both the residential low and the residential median district. It says, if you're carrying out a home occupation, you can't put any sign up. And this new sign ordinance sounds like you can. So I see a conflict there with those two. My inclination would be to keep the residential character of the community. Don't let people put signs out, because it's incidental to the residential use of the property.
Counsel, anything more? Okay, Fred, thank you. Again, you know, this is not an op. This is really an excellent job of research of this. And I don't think I've ever seen a more detailed analysis of ordinance here. This is a lot here. So, you know, I think we have a good foundation here to finish this thing. Excellent. All right, folks, it's going on almost 10 o'clock. We have general business. Does anyone have any general business? Any citizen comments, finals? We have a motion to adjourn. We've got three. Anybody?
Yeah, there's four.
Anybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Good night, everyone.